Kia mātata. Kia mātata. Kia mātata. Ehe. Kura. Ehe. Ika. Iha. Maori ora.
Tēnā koutou ka tūa, no mai ha re mai. Kē te hui o Puro Ranga Ranga, the Social Cultural Economic Committee, i te nei ra. Tēnā whakamui o mai ki au, ki te tahi ko tuhutuhu. Manapuri rā nei menei ka wehe koe i te hui. So if you need to leave the hui, please let myself or Alyssine know. So we do have a number of public participants this morning. So we're going to go through till 11 o'clock for morning tea. Hopefully, we manage to keep to time because we have, Kura is available to join us at 11:20. We want to make sure we keep to that time. So if we do go over, we might have to cut morning tea a little bit short and then have a break again after the item is finished. So thank you, everybody, in advance for your patience and your total call. So I move the motion. I'm going to move on to apologies, actually, I need them first. So are there any from the room? We've got some from, I think councillor Calvert said she's apologising for lateness because she's having trouble getting onto the internet. She is trying. Is there anyone else? I think councillor Phone has an apology for lateness as well. She's not far away. Are there any others? Like otherwise, we've got people online. We've got the mayor, councillor Young and councillor O'Neill online. So that's... We don't need to put on councillor Phone's one because she's here. So I move the motion that the Puro Ranga Ranga Committee accepts those apologies. Ma wa e totu ko. Do I have a second there? Thank you, Deputy Mayor Frey. So now put that to the vote. Have you voted? Oh, she's voting. Yes. I think they're waiting for you to press the button. Kua mana. So that's carried. I call on members to declare any conflicts of interest in relation to any items on the agenda. I can't see that there will be any, so we'll keep moving forward. So confirmation of minutes. Ifakatako tūa no au iti motini, I move the motion that Puro Ranga Ranga Social Cultural Economic Committee approve the minutes of the committee meeting held on the 7th of April 2022. Having been circulated, may be taken as read and confirmed as an accurate record of that meeting. Ma wa e totu ko. Do I have a second there? Kia ora councillor Paul. So now put that to the vote.
Just waiting on a vote from councillor Young.
Councillor Young, I think, I can see. Councillor Young, are you voting for that? And Mayor Foster says he's just in the car. He is voting in favour of that. Kua mana, so that's carried. All right, so there are no items not on the agenda. And I just need to make a quick announcement. So just advising the committee that the chief executive has made the decision to withdraw item 2.2 Kandalapool project timeline from the agenda today. So further work needs to be done to assess timelines and community engagement for this project. So that will come probably a bit later this year. So we're going to move straight into public participation. And I'd like to begin by welcoming Richard Noble. So no mai ha re mai, Richard, if you'd like to come and join us up here. And Richard's going to speak to us on the Armenian flag trespass at Anzac Day service at Ataturk Memorial. And so, Richard, you've got five minutes. And yeah, I'm not sure if there'll be time for questions within that, but if there is, maybe some time will kill it.
Tēnā koutou atakaunehere o Pooneke, etu tumanake o te hui, ajildei tēnā koe. In 1915, alongside reports on the First World War, the big news story in Wellington papers was the horrors being afflicted by the Ottoman Empire on its ethnic Armenian citizens. For example, from the Evening Post on 8th November of that year, "The Turkish outrages in Armenia are without parallel in history. Never has there been so resolute an attempt to exterminate a whole race." And the public interest in this led to public outrage, which in turn led to action, which continued for some years after the end of World War One. And here in Aotearoa, relief committees sprang up to raise funds and material aid for the Armenians, including in Pooneke, Wellington, in July 1922, 1922, with the mayor as chairman. Sadly, the intervening decades have seen in Aotearoa the development of an almost historical amnesia towards the Armenian genocide, replaced by the myth of a special bond with our former Anzac foe, Turkey. My grandfather Lloyd Noble was wounded at Gallipoli. Since the matter of the Armenian genocide came to my attention some years ago, I have sought to honour my grandfather's Anzac legacy by working for the formal recognition of the Armenian genocide by the New Zealand government. I have done so with the blessing of leaders of the Armenian community in New Zealand and from an internationally recognised genocide scholar, Thomas Schmutz of Switzerland. And to this end, in recent years, I have been present at the Anzac Day service at the Ataturk Memorial, displaying an Armenian flag in silent witness to the victims of the genocide. I have always done so respectfully and peacefully, with good relations with police who have affirmed to my right to express my opinion in this way. However, this year at the Ataturk Memorial, before the Anzac Day ceremony began, a police officer informed me that I was not welcome to display an Armenian flag as I had in previous years because of the great offence taken by Turkish officials. Freedom of speech notwithstanding, the officer explained that as the Ataturk Memorial was council land, police had been authorised to trespass anyone, but in reality, specifically me, displaying the Armenian flag. The officer further explained that council had taken this decision at the request of MFAAT, who in turn were acting on a request from the Turkish embassy. Ataturk Memorial may be council land, but it is a public space, I would suggest, and the Anzac ceremony is a public event. It was a shameful and expedient move by council to circumvent my freedom of expression guaranteed under section 14 of the Bill of Rights in order to protect the sensibilities of an authoritarian and repressive regime. Furthermore, by kowtowing to the offence taken by the Turkish embassy at any reference to the Armenian genocide, council is in turn validating both the genocide denial of the Turkish government and the ongoing intergenerational trauma of the worldwide Armenian community. As mentioned, in 1922, the mayor of Wellington headed up a relief committee for the survivors of the Armenian genocide. Fast forward 100 years, and in 2022, council has been complicit in denial of that same genocide. And for the record, here is the offending article. Kia ora.
Kia ora, thank you very much. Richard, there is time for partai if there are any from councillors. Ready, councillor Phone?
Kia ora, Richard, thank you for visiting us. So can you just describe in the past, you haven't had any reason or any, you haven't been asked to leave or you haven't been...
No, no.
Refused attendance?
Lovely little chats with the police who have, and in fact, the first year in 2017, the police officer came up and shook me by the hand and said, "Thank you so much for being so respectful." And we affirm your right to do what you're doing.
And so what was your experience of the difference this time?
Well, the officer told me, so I didn't actually stay. The officer told me, "Richard, no flag this year because council have authorised to trespass basically you if you display your Armenian flag at the request of Ministry of Foreign Affairs and Trade, at the request of the Turkish government."
And at, oh, just having a moment, Pukihau, you were there as well?
That was, that was fine.
That was fine? Okay, so it was just at Ataturk?
At Ataturk, yeah.
Okay.
But I went up to the public road and stood there with my flag and they couldn't trespass me from there. But it's a, it's a bit shameful, this isn't Russia. Thank you.
Kia ora. Thank you, Richard.
Kia ora, Richard, thank you for taking the time to come and court it with us. Now I'd like to welcome Patrick Morgan on behalf of Cycle Wellington, who's going to speak to us on item 2.3, the Matairangi track proposal. No mai ha re mai, Patrick. So you've got 10 minutes. And if you leave a bit of time for questions, that would be great.
Okay. Good morning, kia ora koutou. Patrick Morgan representing the cycling community in Wellington. We have around two and a half thousand supporters and followers. Every time people ask Wellingtonians what they want about their city, they say, "A thriving community, good connections, great connections to nature, to the green belt and the blue belt." And, you know, I suggest to you the proposal, the generous proposal from Trails Wellington to build a new trail in Matairangi is a great fit with that. I think it also signifies something I love about Wellington. You've got this combination of a public asset, public land, and private money and community labour. It comes together to give us something that makes Wellington really amazing. So I think it's a really generous gift from Trails Wellington. And I don't know about you, but when my partner cooks me a meal, I say, "Thank you very much." And if I want to add a bit of salt to make it to my taste, I'll do that. I think the proposal has been well thought through and I acknowledge the work that council staff have done to address concerns from submitters. And I've read the paper, it's very detailed. So, yeah, in short, we support the proposal for several reasons. It's a good fit with council values and plans to lower emissions, to be, you know, a thriving capital city, to promote good connections with nature. There's huge support from public submissions. I think we can expect overall environmental and social benefits. And I see Trails Wellington have a kind of a slogan, "Trails, Trees and Traps." So it allows actually better access to this part of Mount Victoria to improve the biodiversity there. It's far from a pristine old growth forest. Anyone who's been up there will see that. And I think this provides good access to improve biodiversity and control the pests. I think that's it. I'm going to allow lots of time for questions, but if there's none, I'm happy to give the time to others. Thank you.
Kia ora, Patrick. I do have a partai for you. Sometimes during the submissions, we hear a bit about, you know, cyclists making people walking on tracks feel a bit unsafe just with the way that they do things. Are you able to speak to that and what you've seen in the cycling community around, you know, sort of encouraging etiquette to help our walkers feel safe?
Yeah. I mean firstly, there's no way that Cycling Wellington or Trails Wellington condones reckless riding. And in fact, the track has several design features designed to mitigate that. The days are gone when cowboys built tracks all over the place. We've kind of come in from the cold and working closely with city council over the years. And I think you'll see the evidence of that at Makra Peak and Waimapeehi, also in the region of Orangatuhi and Wainui Amata, that there's a core community of responsible people who want to add an asset to our city. It's really bad news for us when there are these conflicts. So we do our best through programmes like Word that you've heard about, clubs like Revolve and the Wellington Mountain Bike Club, to set a good example and to encourage people to adhere to the mountain bike code, which is signposted throughout our riding areas. In saying that, there's always a few that can spoil it. Unfortunately, we lack the ability to control everyone's behaviour. It's something we all live with in the city. Yeah, I think, I think the council's got a lot to gain from working with responsible clubs and trail builders to get a really good outcome here. Mountain biking is booming in popularity and for many people, it's a reason why they choose to live in Wellington. It's, I really can't think of another capital city that has such great access to trails a short distance from where many people live and work. I think it's an amazing asset for the city and I think the council would be on strong ground to accept this gift.
Kia ora, we've got a partai from councillor Phone.
Kia ora, Patrick. I, I'm excited about the prospects of mountain biking and the, you know, what we've creating together in Wellington. But would you say that there's a place in the inner city for a more, you know, around the mountain bike, Matairangi particularly, for a more shared culture and space with more extreme mountain biking on, you know, external city? So a slightly different culture or style of mountain biking in a city area?
Yeah, I'd agree with that. And I think the style of this track, I believe it's called a grade three track, so it's for intermediate skilled riders. It provides a transition for, in fact, for many of our young people who have benefited from bikes in schools and programmes like Word, who are looking to progress. It's too big a step to go from, you know, beginner tracks to ones that require more skills. So this is the way to transition people's skills towards trails that are appropriate for them. I note also, this is on the east face of Mount Victoria. It's an area that's currently, I guess, not as popular as the west face of Matairangi. And I think, again, through the design features of the trail and the way that trail crossings are handled, I think you'll find that, yeah, the potential conflicts are minimised there. In saying that, it's, you know, another word for conflict is sharing. And if you go to the waterfront... When I, when people go to the waterfront, right, there's a lot of people who want to use that space. It's a public asset. Now, if people use it inappropriately, it looks like conflict. But shared spaces are also what make cities great. So mixing up people from, you know, different walks of life, if I can say that, it actually is one of the things that makes a city great. Again, it's the design features of the trail, the education through the clubs that sets the expectation of what the appropriate behaviour is.
Kia ora, I'm going to partai from councillor Penet.
Yeah.
Thanks for your presentation. So just two questions. Do you think the city needs another mountain bike park? I'm not quite sure what's going on at Pareda, whether they're making any progress, but just given we've got one in the west, do we need one somewhere else? Or Toopahoa as well, as councillor Paul reminded me. And the other question is, I guess, is there an understanding that for some people, a fast-moving bike coming at them is a little bit unsettling? And just like a driver coming fast at a cyclist on a road is also unsettling?
Sure, yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about, councillor. Do we need more places for people to exercise, to get in touch with nature? Absolutely. And I think the style of this proposed track is, it addresses a gap in the network in the eastern suburbs and central city that people can access easily without driving to Orangatuhi or Wainui Amata or other popular areas. Again, mountain biking is increasing in popularity and I think, you know, your staff are doing really well to meet that public demand. In terms of the feeling of having someone coming at you fast, I absolutely know that feeling. And I note this path is, well, first of all, it doesn't exist at the moment, so it's not actually displacing current users. It's an addition to Wellington's trail network. And again, through the design features and the education, I think you'll find that the potential conflicts are mitigated there. Yeah, does that answer your question, councillor? Yeah, is it perfect? No, but I'm not sure there's anything we do that's perfect. But I don't think that's a good reason not to say yes to this generous proposal.
Can I just ask one more question? Look, it is incredibly generous and I'm sure we're all grateful for it. But not all groups have the same level of resources. So do you have any thinking, like, so for the walkers or whatever, is there any way that we can make that more equitable?
Wellington has a pretty good network of footpaths and trails throughout the city, which, you know, the city council has provided. This is a case where the biking community has come together to raise money for a trail, which we think will be an asset for Wellington. I think it addresses the fact that the cycling community is still underserved in Wellington. It's going to change in the next five to 10 years and I'm looking forward to that. Yeah. In terms of, you know, walking advocates raising money to build a trail, it's, there is some history in that. I think the clinical track on Aro Valley was funded through the Wellington Marathon Clinic. So there is also a tradition of different trail users raising money and creating assets for the city.
Kia ora, thank you very much, Patrick. That's all the partai and thank you for taking the time to come and court it with us today. Really appreciate it. Now we're going to move on to the public participation for item 2.1, Tupikiora Maori Strategy. And so the next seven public participants will be speaking on there. And we'll begin with Karen Fifield on behalf of Wellington Zoo. No mai ha re mai, Karen. Good to see you here today. And so you're familiar with how this works, 10 minutes and there might be some partai at that time. So over to you, Kia ora.
Kia ora. Kua Karen Fifield, toko engoa, nor Wellington Zoo aho, tena koutou ka tūa. It gives me great honour, actually, to be able to speak to the new Maori strategy, Tupikiora. I think this is a very important strategy for the city and I really congratulate Kerepa and his team and Barbara and the councillors for the leadership in this space. And I think that as the capital city, it's very important that we show leadership. And I think having this sort of strategy to bring all of this together for us as a city really leads us towards being a bi-cultural city in the truest sense of the word. It's been absolutely amazing for us at Wellington Zoo to work with Kerepa's team and they really are a force of nature. And I think that they should be congratulated on their absolute determination to complete this mahi. And what's going to be wonderful to see is how the actions behind this become reality within our city. It's been interesting for me, thinking about what we've been doing at Wellington Zoo. And we've been working with Taunaaki Farnawi for many years now, with the wonderful Nevin Broughton. And we've done a lot of work in terms of naming protocols and things like that. But the last couple of years, we've been working really in depth. So we've done a lot of, like, you know, sort of symbolic work, but now it's really deep and meaningful work to truly become a bi-cultural organisation. And with Kanohikiria, we've actually been working with Nevin on doing that. For us, we have a lot of people who are not New Zealand-born in Wellington Zoo. And what it's been lovely for them is to actually be able to embrace Tikanga Maori, to understand what that means for us as New Zealanders. And the other amazing thing that's been incredible through Kanohikiria is that people of Maori birth have reclaimed it. And it's been quite an incredible emotional experience for those people. And having Kerepa's team to actually support them through that process has been incredibly emotional for me as the chief executive. And I would like to say, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the CCOs, but I do want to acknowledge our experienced Wellington colleagues who are here today. But the CCOs have been very, very committed to working on our Maori work and to be able to say that we are all bi-cultural organisations. And we're all on a journey and we're all learning about how to do that properly. But we've been incredibly supported by Kerepa's team and I really want to congratulate them again because it's been, it's been quite an emotional journey for us as a group of CCOs. I would like to acknowledge Amy Hughes, who's in the room with me. She's been leading the work on Kanohikiria at Wellington Zoo. And, you know, Nevin is a very busy man, so he's a bit like the Scarlet Pimpernel sometimes. But actually, he's so committed to the work with us and I really want to thank him and Amy for really working on this mahi. Amy for really working on this mahi. Last Friday, I was at Pipiti Amari for the signing of Takai Hare. And it was quite emotional. And when Barbara asked us to go and sign the document, I was quite shocked. I thought, okay, I'm going to do this. And it was, it was something that I think we've been working towards as a city, probably not soon enough, but it's done. So I do want to congratulate Jill Day particularly in terms of her passion for this mahi around the council table. And I think those two documents, the strategy we're talking about today and Takai Hare, actually bring those two po together to really create something that's really meaningful for us as a city. So I just want to say congratulations to everyone involved and now the mahi really begins. So, Kia ora Katoa and thank you everybody for being the forces of nature that you are and we will be there supporting you every step of the way. Thank you.
Kia ora. So I feel like we want to give you a paki paki.
Very committed to this, I must, because I remember when I moved here and I used to think to myself, as the capital city zoo, what are we doing? It was actually non-existent. And as the capital city zoo, it was something, and Amy knows this, it's very close to my heart, that we show leadership as the capital city zoo about being bicultural and really embracing Tikanga Maori. So, and Flur will know this from being on our board as well, how important it is to me, particularly as the chief executive, so yeah.
We've got lots to learn from you all too and all the public participants here today. Like, you know, we're here to learn and hear from you and we're really encouraged by what you're doing. Are there any partai? I feel like you've covered it really well, so I don't think there will be. But thank you so much because, yeah, we really appreciate you coming to share with us and what this means with you as a zoo and as part of your journey.
It's very important, so thank you very much. Kapai.
Now, I'd like to welcome Nick Rowan on behalf of the Accessibility Advisory Group. So Nō mai hara mai Nick, it's good to see you here today. You know how this works as well, but yeah, we're looking forward to hearing from you, Kia ora.
Have to put these on, otherwise I can't see what I'm doing. It's lovely to be here anyway. Kia ora Katoa, call Nick Rowan Aho. I'm here as the co-chair of the AAG. I'm just here to support Tupiki ora. AAG had a very wonderful engagement with the council officers to discuss Tupiki ora and what it means for tangata faikaha Maori in Wellington. And that was a very different engagement for AAG. It was a very warm engagement, a very long engagement for us. We certainly went over time, but we were welcoming of that engagement. This strategy will benefit many tangata faikaha Maori that live in Wellington. There are 50,000 disabled people that live in Wellington, many of whom identify as tangata faikaha Maori. So this strategy will be very important for them to deliver the services and the engagement with council that they certainly need and we certainly endorse that as AAG. So just like to thank the council team led by Kerepa for bringing this to council and also obviously councillor Day for driving this work, it's very important. So as a group, we're certainly on board and supportive of the work. So my remarks are very limited today, but they're certainly supportive of the work and we're looking forward to continuing engagement with this work. And yeah, that's all I have to add to this today.
Kia ora, it's a very significant addition. We really appreciate you taking the time to come and share that. Are there any partai? Councillor Matthews.
Kia ora, Nick, lovely to see you. And I, you know, my experience of that session was exactly the same and I was so impressed with the sort of knowledge and understanding that Johnny and his team already brought to those issues. And I guess I just want you to maybe think about what the sort of intersectionality conversation that was happening, that there was sort of so much that people felt were kind of common issues and concerns.
Yeah, I mean, intersectionality is an area within a disability community that's coming to the fore more and more. So I think in terms of intersectionality between tangata faikaha and disabled people is certainly something that we're going to have to think about as a council. Because when we design our services and deliver our services, we're going to have to think about it with a tāreua lens, with a disability lens. So that will be something that hopefully this strategy will enable us to do. Because ultimately, if it's good for Maori, it's good for everybody. So I think, hopefully this strategy will enable us to be able to do that with a little bit more coherence and deliver services that are ultimately better for everybody.
Kia ora, Nāma hi maio ha kiakui, Nick. Thank you very much for coming to courted all of us, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Kia ora.
Thank you. Kia ora.
Kia ora. So now we're going to move on to the screen and we've got Jackson Lacy online on behalf of youth council. I think we've also got Anastasia, I think I saw in the back, Kia ora. So Nō mai hara mai, I'm Jackson, thank you for coming to courted all with us. You know very much how this works, so I'll hand the raka over to you and go from there, Kia ora.
Ma te na koe, chill, et te kaifakaheria te ko metinae. Te naita mehi ki nga pou e fa'a a te kaupapa nei. Ko te a te awa ko taranaki fānui ki te u pōtika, ki te rinanga o ngāti toaranga tira me te kaunehe rohuki o poneke. Kaanui te mehi ki a mataho aru nui te rōpu, te rōpu fa'katau a te nai kaupapa. Wa ana tino mahi, tino mahi maioha, hei fa'kanui'a, hei fa'katu, hei fa'kaman'a. Ngai Maori kaatoa me ngai mea Maori, ngai aru ra Maori, ngai Maori tangakātoa, kai totātou tāuni. He a ta'hoa he fa'i maioha te mahi a te mana'ho, mataho aru nui, ki te rinanga tāiohi o te kaunehe. Kua mahi ratau kia mātou, me mātou, hei tēhi a mātou. Fa'karo i roto i ngai pepa i roto i ngai ite tina na me te wairoa huki a te pānu nei. Nō raerakaanui te mehi kia ratau. I'm just so excited by this. You know, I've been on youth council for longer than frankly I'd like to admit. And it's refreshing. It is refreshing to see this work finally popping above the surface. As many around the table will know, the work of supporting Maori Tonga and supporting whanau Maori and rangatahi Maori is so often done in private, is so often done below the surface, is so often done by individuals hustling to try and achieve for whanau and rangatahi. And I am so excited that this strategy is going to put that stuff in black and white, is going to say, this is the challenge that we have set forth, that we will be held accountable to. And I'm excited about that. I'm excited that this is happening and I'm excited that it is being done in a renewed spirit of partnership between Manafenua and council. I'm incredibly excited by the potential that Takai Hare has, oh, both what it has already achieved in bringing the parties together, but also the potential that it has for the future to change the way that we think about implementing tetutiti or waitangi in this city. I am incredibly excited by that. So, kaanui te mehi ki aku tu kaatoa, ma manefenua, ma apia te kaunehe. Katoa kia. Ma te na te mātenga o tu o ata ama aku fa'karo, ingari me na hei partai a katoa, partai mai kia.
Kia ora. Kia ora, ihoa. Are there any partai for Jackson or councillor Matthews?
Kia ora, Jackson, and thank you so much for that courted all, it's beautiful. I guess I've got a question about, you know, sometimes the pushback we get about working, you know, more in a bicultural way and respecting tetutiti.
You don't have to tell me about that one, but...
Comes from older people? And I guess I'm just interested in that perspective, you know, how is that different? That you see with younger people and through youth council, you know, that people who are maybe growing up with a different ethos and how they see this work as somewhat differently than, you know, say, my parents' generation, some of whom... Yeah.
I think the best way that I can talk about this is, I was talking to someone who was deciding whether or not to learn Maori. And they ultimately decided to and their reason to was, "Tero may not be the language of the artaro of today, but it is the language of the artaro of tomorrow." Even from a demographic perspective, overwhelmingly, young people are strongly in favour of honouring tetutiti, thinking back to what Matuamwana said, treaties are not to be settled, they are to be honoured. And rangatahi, Maori and pa'kiha tauwi are overwhelmingly in favour of this kaupapa. So, yeah, bat on, basically. We're behind you.
Kia ora, thank you.
Rāwe, we've got a partai from councillor Paul.
Rārā, ihoa, good to see you, it's Tam. Hey, I was just wondering, I really enjoyed your courted all, so just as a precursor, it really resonated with me because I might be wrong, but you are a second language learner of Tero Maori and obviously you're Maori as well. So I just, it was really awesome to hear your courted all and to see your growth within Tero Maori and your confidence growing as well. And I just wanted to ask, as a rangatahi living in the city, how have you found your journey and do you think there are enough opportunities for rangatahi Maori to reclaim their au? And if not, do you have any suggestions for how we can improve that?
First, te na koe, ihoa, no to arua kia. It's been amazing having rangatahi Maori on council and seeing that we can do that. We can do that. And seeing Maori excellence everywhere I go in this space is just incredible. So, kaanui te mehi ki aku. I think it would have been much harder if I'd been anywhere else, basically, to be rangatahi Maori, learning Tero Maori, because there aren't many cities that have embraced Tero unofficialdom as much as Wellington has. And I'm mehi tu te tauihu and I'm mehi tu Jill for her mahi on that one. I think, I mean, me kaupapa hare, Tero Maori, it should be something that you can't get away with not knowing, you can't get away with not using. And that's where we need to move, that's the direction, you know, that things need to move in if we are really to strengthen Tero and make it a working language. And I know that having it be a working language is a big part of te tauihu and that's really a part of why I really like that strategy. I think council is on the right track at the moment. I think obviously, there is still more to go, but I also think that, yeah, I would find it particularly interesting, a dialectical perspective and things, not in terms of political dialectic, not time for much of study 101, but more in terms of like, reo aru iwi, in terms of embracing the dialect and the mitta of Manafenua here. And using Takai Hare as a way of building that partnership. I think Wellington has a very good basis in Tero Maori, but it is now time for us to kind of go to the next step and kind of move into the space of Tero rangatahi.
Rāwe, I could just keep listening to this. Are there any other partai? I think, Jackson, you've certainly shared some really important fakaro with us and thank you to you and Anastasia for being here with us today to bring your totoku from youth council. We appreciate the mahi that you do and, yeah, this is for you guys, this is for rangatahi, so Kia ora.
Te na koe.
Well, now I'd like to welcome Mekaire Paki on behalf of Te Puna Fakauora, Nō mai hara mai Mekaire. So, Mekaire, you've got 10 minutes and I'm looking forward to hearing your courted all, Kia ora.
Mai te tatūnga fa'karo ki ngāhuatanga o te inengaro. Mai te ngāwariake te ahunga ki naia nei. Aku atu nei te tūranga ki ronganga pakahiwi o te au kohatu. If I'm confident with where we'll be in the future and composed of where we are at present, it's merely because we're standing on the shoulders of the past. And in that stance, I want to acknowledge taranaki fānui, te atiawa, ngāti toaranga tira, as well as raukava te au ki te tonga. I've been someone that has been fortunate to be nurtured by these three iwi as I was raised here in this region. So in saying that, I want to introduce myself first and foremost as a person and then also introduce myself as a professional. So, on my father's side, I'm ngātiapa, ngāwairiki, tu farahtua and Irish. On my mother's side, I'm ngāti poro, ngai tahu, tu mantakōkiri, ngāti raukava te au ki te tonga, ngāti ko'fata, as well as Welsh. And today, I greet you with all of this fa'kapapa as someone that belongs to all of these different iwi, but has been raised and nurtured among the iwi that we get to be part of in this region. Nō raeraka mehi a rawa tia ngai iwi kainga, kamehi a hoki katoa. I want to also mehi yourselves as you have chosen to be in this space right now, in your position as kaiteaki for this fenua, as kaiteaki and partners with iwi. Nō raerate na kutu katoa. As a person, I'm someone that is absolutely committed to the normalisation of Tereu and Tikanga and I want to applaud you for giving us a porfiri to be able to contribute and give koha to the vision that is going to be presented today. I lead a movement that started off with a handful of people wanting to do Tereu Maori breakfasts almost three years ago in the week of Matariki. That started up with a handful of us, "Oh yeah, let's just get together at Fairewaka and have breakfast and we'll practise our au with each other." That turned into a movement. But I want to acknowledge Te Ta'arua, Mark Bradley, who in his own right has done a lot of efforts in feeding Tereu Maori regardless of his fa'kapapa being of England descent. He's come and contributed quite a lot as a koha for the kaupapa. So that movement has grown into Tereu Maori breakfast where we've been able to deliver, have relationships with many of the cafes around the region. And then we had Te Pa'porakau Te Tangao Tereu, where in the evenings, at the end of a week, we might be able to get together, have a few drinks and have some karaoke. And some of the challenges might be to get up and sing your song in Tereu Maori on the spot, developing your confidence. But then we started to realise that, hey, we're eating too much at Te Fāne, we'd better start thinking about our hōwara. So we developed Te Hikoi Tangao Tereu. And so we developed Te Hikoi Tanga o Tere, where we would go with the support of local iwi, go and learn about and walk through the ngahere, climbing to the peaks of different mountains, ranges and getting some of the historical kordoro as we walk through the bush and as we get to the top, we start talking about some of the collaborations between council, iwi and business. And in fact, a lot of those hikoi have people represented in those spaces so that they can talk about those experiences. So that's Te Hikoi Tanga o Tere, we've also got Wakama, we've got many other examples of events. Basically in that time, with the support of Te Matawa, we've been able to do over 200 events within Te Atiyawa, within Raukawa and within Ngati Toa Rangatira, getting our people regardless of waka papa to understand and connect with the fenua. So that's our Kai Kordoro movement, there's about two and a half thousand people that participate in that and basically it's about no longer being a ho'ha and start being a ko'ha. And these people come from all different waka papa, as I mentioned, we've got Tangata Fenua and Tangata Tiriti and that wide range of Tangata Tiriti coming together with this Kōpapa. Basically, the bottom line is we want to be good tupuna from our mokopuna. As a professional, I get to, I'm within the Ministry of Justice and I'm a kaiteaki of the Maori strategy for the Ministry of Justice. I also work as Te Puna Fakauora, working with NZDF, New Zealand Defence Force, as well as WorkSafe and being able to have an impact with the mentorship of the Maori chiefs of those spaces, to be able to implement and bring some of this Maori, bring some of this energy into that space as well. So I'm quite fortunate to have the mentorship of Te Hokai and being able to support some of the efforts that our ko'matua have been trying to put in, in government. In saying that, I mentioned the porfiri, we're aware of, you know, what happens in the porfiri with the werro, you have the challenge, you have the karanga, you have the kor, you have the faikorero, you have the kordoro that goes down about articulating the way forward and you have your hongi, which is our ability to appreciate the relationship with each other, but as well as understand that when we breathe in, we're taking from the world and as we breathe out, we're contributing to the world. And we all love to have the Kai at the end of a porfiri. What I want to do is touch on the porfiri, but we're going to do a bit of a moonwalk. So if we look at our porfiri, our Kai, and we see that as our kawa, our vision, our portal, yeah. And then when we have our hongi, we need to have in place a lot of the tikanga or action points in place to bring out, to bring about this kawa, this vision. And this is something that has been done in the development of tupiki ora, yeah. And then we have in the faikorero space, the values that are put in place as a root system for those action points that are our tikanga in order to attract our kawa. And in the karanga space, hey, we're looking to understand our purpose, our pu'take and asking the question, what is the why that makes us cry? Yeah. And then in the werro, the biggest challenge is asking ourselves, who do we want to be? Who are we to attract what we want to bring into fruition? And that's where I'm going to end my little kordoro here is about, what are the principles? What are the ma'apono that further empower that why that make us cry, that stimulates those values, that further empowers as a root system to our tikanga so that we can attract into reality our kawa? Norera ekama tenaku tu, tenaku tu. Thank you tino much.
Kia ora. To the committee, are there any partai? I know, I've had the honour of being an akumanga, a student of Mekaiere over the years, so I've had the honour of hearing some amazing fa'aro. Thank you for taking the time to come and share your fa'aro with us. It's really beautiful to have it in this environment and to hear fa'aro Maori, Tiam Maori values coming through and helping us, helping to guide us. Really appreciate that. Kia ora. Tenaku te mehi. Right, so now we're back to the screen, this feels strange, we're in Atenana and then on the screen. So now we have Rirenoa Rangi Pope on behalf of Ngatoero or Herenga Waka. So No'maa Haremai, thank you for joining us. So you've got 10 minutes and if there's any time within that, there might be some partai, but yeah, so. Kai aku itira koe.
E muria ia i katakoto te aro aku piki amo kura, karewa ki te rangie. Ngāuri waka eke o Autea, o Tokomaru, o Kurahoipō, o Tai Nui, arā Te Tiriti o Waitangi, o Tai Mai ki Te Pane Pane, o Teika, Nui a Maui, tiki tiki a Taranga, tenaku kautau, tenaku kautau. Ko Autea, o Tokomaru, o Kurahoipō Anora, o Tai Nui Te Nai, te miꞌia tunai, te miꞌia tunai kia kautau. Tenakuia karepa, te tai au te kiteia koe, hei te fa'aro nui, kai ra ra koe. Moa'i fakapauera werea kia katupikiake, te tū o ngai Maori eno nei te ta'oneo te wanganui ataraika, te nai kamaki. Te na'no kautau te kauni ero oponeke, kautau kua pai fa'aro, me peia, e waka mana ai i a kautau a no, iraro i te kaupapa o te waka takoto, rautaki Maori. Na kita te tiroanga Maori, ma te waka piki i te mana o Tohoa, ma ra ra e waka mana ai koe, ya koe a no. So I descend from, as I said, the three ulu waka of Taranaki, Autea waka, Tokomaru, Kurahoipō and have connections with Tai Nui, through my manangi porto on Raukawa's side. My great, great grandfather, no, sorry, great, great, great grandfather is a Boilin from Ireland and as such that connects me to my Pakia side here and all of those who are here by virtue of Te Tiriti o Waitangi. So it's safe to say that I have a personal stake in how this strategy is implemented in the next 10 years and the impacts it might have in the next 50 years for my future children and mokopuna. My name is Rirenoa Rangi, I'm involved in a few Rangatahi initiatives back home in my special paradise of South Taranaki, which you're trying to figure out where this virtual background is. I'm also a research software engineer up at Victoria University of Wellington and I'm involved in a few initiatives with early career researchers, Maori, Rangatahi Maori and our Pacifica relations. So I'd like to start off and say that the wakahodua is a great analogy, it speaks to the shared responsibility that I think that Manafenua and council, we all have to ensure a prosperous future for Maori who live in our city. And as one of our Kai Kordoro has said earlier, if Maori thrive, we all do. As you probably figured, a wakahodua has two wakani and as we have seen over the last hundred and how many years, these two waka have very different aspirations, goals, who are views. So perhaps something to think about for the council waka as well as the Manafenua wakas, what exactly are these goals and where do they align, where they don't align? What are the culture that exists on each of these waka and the tikanga, the kawa that each of these waka carry? Is the council happy with the culture that they carry? And does this represent the same aspirations that Pakia have in Wellington? If not, does that culture needs to change? So I think partnership requires one to be just as introspective. So I'm going to go. Kotaya tu ki te Kōpapa ne. Te tahataia, I think one thing that I've been asked about my relations, from my relations is our awa, ne, our rivers and our streams. The Kumutoto, the Waima'api, these awa connect us to Manafenua narratives and Maori notions of wellbeing, the Wa'ora, the Wa'iu'a. And these, I guess in turn, speak to a sense of belonging that our Rangatahi can see, can hear, can feel. It's a connection that's kind of what I'm speaking to here. How do we foster a sense of connection with our awa, with our natural environment? Probably not by piping them all underground. Hey, apitiatu, the way we treat our natural environment, my perspective, is a good indication of how we care for our manu. If you invite someone over to your house and you've got a dirty backyard and a messy kitchen, well, they probably don't want to stay there or they're probably going to think that that's how you treat them. Moving to page 17, the Wakapakari Pu Manawa, I think there was a kordoro in there about a STEM program. Tino pae. Pu Hodo Academy over at Massey University comes to mind, so why not something equivalent with Victoria University and Marion Barber, Rich and Co over at Apo'po. So some of those initiatives I think would be really beneficial for our people. I think something I'd like to see as well is the council taking more of an active role and partnering with local businesses, MOUs, agreements that put Manafenua in turns or moles, as sometimes we like to call them, at all levels and with our local businesses to give them opportunities, but also to kind of foster that leadership in different areas. That's all I've really got to say to speak to the strategy. 10 minutes is a short amount of time, but I guess as a final thought to everybody here, Manafenua, ngā kaidkonihe da, kia kaha. Be brave, be strong and reach further than you've ever reached before. It's the only way we're going to get anything done. Kia vata.
Oh, kia ora. You're getting a paki paki. Hei me himaua kia kue. Are there any partai? Councillors, committee? No, oh, councillor Penet has a partai.
Kia ora for that, that was wonderful. Actually, I should have also possibly asked the last speaker too, but I was just wondering, given the language is Tonga and so I'm just trying to work that out of my own head about without, we don't want to be doing cultural appropriation as Pakia, but we want to support that journey and the incorporation of the language into everyday life. So is it right that the language should be used by everyone without that cultural appropriation? That's a long one, it might be a bit offline sometime.
I'm sure there are far more qualified people to speak to those kinds of questions than me, but I'll give a response, I guess, and from my perspective, but as the wakahodua kind of analogy speaks to it, it takes, you know, it takes a whole lot of people, a whole lot of processes and a whole lot of money to get things over the line. So we shouldn't rely on Maori only to revitalise aero that was almost taken away from us by non-Maori. So I would push the cultural appropriation thing to the side and say, what are non-Maori, what are governments, councils doing to right the wrongs that have been done in the past? So they have an obligation, I would say, to actually help revitalise the ero because it was the same institutions that tried to take them away from us.
Kia ora, we've got a partai, I'm here partaiano, councillor Conde.
Kia ora, tenaku Rirenoa Rangi. I just wanted to follow up on your comments about the awa and the importance of that and the fact that most of our awa in the city have been piped and some of the aspirations to maybe reverse that or reconnect people with those awa. Can you talk to us a bit more about why that is so important in Tiam Maori and the sense of belonging that that can deliver for people?
Well, you know, we think about Te Tahataia, natural environment, well, it's all kind of interconnected, so our sense of wellbeing, I'm talking about the Maori wellbeing here, is inextrudably linked with the wellbeing of the natural environment. So if we are not well, then our land is not well and vice versa. So that's what I mean in terms of a feeling of wellbeing or in terms of, yeah, I guess wellbeing is what I'm speaking to in that regard. In terms of connection, you know, it goes back to, I think what someone else has said earlier today about having a Maori footprint in Wellington, which is quite non-existent in a lot of places and a good way to kind of bring some of that back, some of that connection to our fenua is to have a natural environment that we can have Manafenua narratives wrapped around. So we can speak to how these awa were used, how the Kumutoto was used back in the day when we were trading flax along there down to the port, how it was connected to Kumutoto pa on the terrace, which is of course not there anymore. So how do we engage with our natural environment to kind of create more narratives and have these narratives open, visible for everybody? So even non-Maori can see that this is, this place was a place before the concrete and there was some life here at one point and now it's shifted, but we can still talk about that and honour that past and feel connected to that past, even if we can't visibly see it. And hopefully in the future, we will be able to visibly see some of these things.
Kia ora, thank you.
Kia ora, ngā mehi ma'aha, ano Rirenoa Rangi, thank you so much for taking the time to come and kordoro with us and I feel like we're all sitting here learning quite a lot in the process, so thank you very much for imparting some knowledge with us, we appreciate that and ngā mehi kio, kia tupuna, huki, kia ora.
Tenaku. Tenaku tu.
All right, we are now up to, I'd like to welcome Ross Davis, No'maa Haremai, No' Ross, who's coming to speak to us on behalf of BGI. Welcome you to come up and share with us. And so you've got 10 minutes as well. Kia ora.
Kia ora, kautau, na mehi kia te atua, na mehi kia papatu'a nuku, na mehi kia te tanga te fenua, kia te Manafenua, na mehi kia te tanga te tiriti. Na mehi kia kautau katu'a. Ross Davis, I hope, kau fa'akahari o BGI. And yeah, I've just come, I wanted to acknowledge, just really come along to acknowledge the journey, the Manafenua and the council have been on to get to this point and I suppose to thank you for including us and Rangatahi in the process and thank you for remembering to invite us here today, although I didn't manage to get the five Rangatahi here with me who were keen to come, but they'll probably be here for the Kai afterwards. So, yeah, I think what has stood out for me in the strategy is page eight. And in particular, not, the words are great, but particularly the photograph of Alex Tanifa and the way that he's a young man who has been brought up in Wellington with all of the challenges, I won't tell you his story, it's his story to tell obviously, but all of the challenges which many young Maori experience and part of his journey has been with BGI. And part of his journey has been experienced a lot of aloha as well as those challenges and that comes through in that photo, both from mentors in this community and from the council, in fact, from Celia Wade Brown, who asked him to be part of the Tuia Kōpapa with her and mentor each other and help her to understand what it's like to be a young Maori in Pooniki. And yeah, just a little story, the maker of the electric car got invited, Alex was also mentored on a programme through BGI by a sort of 67-year-old, hunched, tall, quite unusual-looking Pakia man. And he also had a very beautiful girlfriend and he was invited to the Mez. And he was invited to the mess house with the, um, maker of the electric car at, to, to bring a partner. And, um, he, he chose to, to, um, ask Philip to come, come with him, not his, not his, uh, not his new girlfriend. And, uh, and I think that, I, I suppose I just wanted to, um, give that example of, um, I, I suppose working together as a community to Pakia and Maori to support, um, each other. And, um, and, and he was, he was supported to be in that relationship by the Tuia Ko Papa. And, um, the Tuia Ko Papa is something which, um, Karapa and, um, Andy Jil and, um, Tamatha, many, and the council have really supported that. And in my forty years doing youth work, it's something which, um, stands out to me as, as one of the, the greatest thing for, for young Maori like, like Alex and, uh, and like Tamatha in fact as well. So, um, so I, I just wanted to, uh, acknowledge, um, you know, that, that this journey's not just about, you know, big strategies and all of that. It's about, um, young Maori being able to look up to leaders, um, uh, that have been through what they have been through, um, and, uh, and experienced, um, yeah, so I, I think, experience things like Alex has and, um, yeah, and I, and I suppose, I, I just really wanted to thank, thank you all for, for sticking with this journey. Um, and, you know, also to the, the Pakia councillors who, who have always been on board, but especially to the, um, Pakia councillors who have struggled with, with the journey and, and, um, who have begun to have the scales fall, fall from their eyes and, um, and have changed their position. And I, and I've seen that happen, I just wanted to particularly acknowledge Andy and Shaun, um, in that regard. And, and not just that, but the aruha around them, uh, to support them on that journey. Um, so yeah, that's pretty much, uh, all I've got to say. Um, it, it's really just a big mahi too, to all of you, so Kia ora koe tae, yeah.
Kia ora, so did you have some rangatahi who are going to turn up soon? Because I realised that we started you a bit early.
Uh, well.
Maybe they will, I'm not sure.
Weirdly, they, some of them are caught up in a health and safety meeting. Um, and, and this, this is really, uh, this Ko Papa really is about health and safety. Um, so, yeah, that, they'll, they'll be here at some stage, um, before midday.
Well, they're welcome to be here at any stage.
Yeah, they, they're, um, Karapa, um, and, and the team provided, uh, opportunities for them to have input and, um, and then have provided this opportunity to, to, uh, hear, hear what their, the input that, that they gave has, you know, become. And, um, yeah, I suppose I just wanted to say thank you for that. But also I think it is, uh, a good reminder, when you look around the room, there aren't that many, um, rangatahi here. And, uh, I think it sort of behoves on us all to, uh, to put in extra effort, including me, you didn't get them here. Uh, so to, to actually include them in these processes and in these celebrations. And, um, so, yeah, so Kia ora.
Very true, thank you. Were there any other partai? Um, Mayor Foster.
Ross, not so much a partai, but a thanks. Um, I'd thank you for all the mentoring that you have done for so many people, for so many rangatahi as well, um, over many years in leading BGI. Uh, and also thank you for your help on our journey as well. And I can remember your very persuasive comments at the time we were considering, um, mana finua representation around this table. So I really appreciate what you said to us then. And also seeing you mentioned, um, the Tuia program, I had the absolute pleasure of meeting Annalise and having a really good conversation with Annalise, uh, earlier this week. And so thank you for nominating her, uh, to the Tuia program. So I really appreciate that too. Kia ora.
Kia ora.
Oh, Kia ora, ngamahi maha kia kui. Right now, we're going to move on to Zoom again. And, um, I'd like to welcome Gabriel Tupou, um, who's representing Tapu Teraanga Marae. No mai ha re mai, Gabriel. Um, so you've got ten minutes and I'll hand over to you. If you've got any time within that ten minutes, there might be a few partai. But, um, looking forward to hearing what you have to share, Kia ora.
Uh, kate mana finua araa, kia tia wataranga ki fa nui, ki tiupoko utika, na titoa rangatira. Te maire o te rohi nei, ki timihika koe tao. Kaiti tia mana, fa laingo, tu faritoa. Uh, te ma raikura Jel, kaiti mihika kui. Kaiti koro matua Andy, tena kui, wa koe kanaheira, tena koe tao katoa. Um, thank you, um, Chair for the, um, uh, and all those that came before me, um, if they call it or, uh, Kimua Ross. Um, and also just to mention and thank Ross for his service as a trustee of the Tapu Teraanga Trust. But, um, officially, um, Madam Chair, yes, I'll be speaking to the Tapu Teraanga Marae, but also on behalf of the Maori wardens in their role during the, um, Wellington protest convoy protest in recent months. Um, so I just want to acknowledge, um, the, that there are, um, a number of, um, our trustees are appointed by, um, external appointing bodies, one of whom is the mayor of Wellington. And Andy Foster appointed, um, council, or the, his appointee, which is, um, Glenda Hughes. And Glenda Hughes has been a, um, also a regional councillor, a phenomenal, uh, support to the, uh, work of the trust in our, um, rebuild. Uh, and also Ross Davis being, um, uh, also an independent trustee. And of course, uh, local Arungutai, uh, member of parliament, Paul Eagle. So I just want to acknowledge those of our trustees who are from outside of the whanau of the marae. And really just to give you an update, that, um, the, we're continuing on our journey in, um, at the moment in partnership with Kainga Order, um, with had housing and urban development on a, um, a journey to explore our opportunities in terms of the rebuilding of our marae in Papukaina. And Glenda Hughes is leading that, um, that body of work alongside the whanau and, um, and the trustees. So pretty much at the feasibility, um, stage still and working with council, uh, officers. And we just want to thank, um, the officers for the support and the time and assisting us, whether it's directly, um, to the marae trust or, um, to the contractors we're working with. Um, so we are at the stage of, of looking at, um, the various zonings, uh, the opportunities there. Of course, um, something that's before Hapseti Council also passed through the Wellington Regional Council recently, uh, question around, uh, rates on Maori-owned land. Um, so certainly some opportunities there as well. Um, so I, I suppose the, in terms of Tapu Teraanga Marae is to, um, looking at partai around, um, how can, um, tara hiri, um, sort of, um, Maori from, um, other, uh, outsider of the srohi, um, who don't fakapa here? And of course, as Ahi Ka whanau, we've been here since the, um, urbanisation of Maori in the nineteen fifties. Um, and so looking at how can we support, um, Papukaina and, um, marae development throughout, uh, Wellington? Uh, with the support of, uh, mana finua as well. And of course, um, Joey, you were there when we hit the, um, unveiling on Kawakawa Mayangar Reserve of the Pae Finua, attributed to Ringi High Town, Tere Paraha. Now, there are also opportunities to work with, uh, other, um, council partners, Kaitaia, Tomac, Vanui uh, on, um, sort of a shared relationship partnership with Tapu Teraanga moving forward. There will be a number of streets to be named, uh, into the future in terms of our development and, uh, also, um, opportunities for, um, shared ko papa and programs. So that's, um, basically in terms of, um, Tapu Teraanga Marae, it's a question around how can council support, um, the growth of basically housing our people. And I know that there are a number of, um, entities and trusts that are working with our people, taking our people off the streets, out of cars and into homes. But how can we do that with our marae and our existing urban Maori, um, authorities and organisations that have been here for many years? So capability building, uh, and supporting through, um, advice and so forth. Um, so I don't know, um, Chair, if you want me to move on to the next subject or take questions at this juncture?
Are there any, um, partai on Tapu Teraanga, just from, um, the korero that Gabriel shared? Um, I think you've explained it quite well where it's, it is really helpful to hear the, um, the background and how things are moving forward. It sounds really encouraging and, um, great to hear that. So do you want to move on to Maori wardens now?
Thank you. And, and also, um, Chair, just to acknowledge the council for their support through the fire of two thousand and nineteen and in terms of, um, you know, um, remay support, um, with your guys who work, uh, with the emergency response kits and so on. So all of that, um, afe throughout and those relationships that were built carry continue to this day. And yes, some terms of, um, Maori wardens, what we'd like to see is, what is the strategy on, um, safety in terms of the Maori wardens, um, space? So some of you know, we were played an integral role, um, throughout, uh, internally, we called, um, Operation Pipatea. And that, um, commenced on February the twelfth, uh, in response to, um, a presence of our own Maori people within the protest at Parliament. And working in partnership with mana finua and with the police, um, to keep the, um, to uphold really what eventually became known as Takahu, uh, or Terakura. And, um, and that ko papa, as you well know, uh, is about, um, maintaining the Maori and the safety of their rohi in, um, throughout Wellington. And the, um, that continues today in terms of other ko papa around the rohi, including Shalley Bay. But getting back to the Maori wardens, um, a question of community safety in this strategy um, is part of, um, the principles already outlined, um, particularly from, it is part of a whanau order. It is part of, um, Tenoranga Tera Tanga. And, um, what I'd like to see is the Maori wardens, um, who currently are in partnership through the Poriki Promise under the leadership of Sizin Tamaki, would like to see an increased capability via terms of resources. Uh, working with, um, just want to acknowledge, um, Paolo Forano, um, who has, who supported us, uh, as a constant contact on behalf of council and the safety team throughout the protest activity. Um, and I'd like to acknowledge the council officers who did attempt and try to secure resources for us. Unfortunately, there was no budget, uh, provision from council for the much-needed resources we required throughout the occupation. So, uh, moving forward, I'd like to see some, um, dollar figures or a commitment of some sort to community safety. And we, uh, would envisage, um, Maori wardens working, um, side by side in partnership with the Ha'pa'aki team. What does that look like in terms of capacity and capability, um, moving forward too? So that we can have a continued, um, safety presence in Wellington, uh, which many of our partner agencies, including Metlink, including, um, business, local businesses found, um, was beneficial and, um, really helpful throughout that time. Don't know if there's any partai there, Chair.
Kia ora, are there any partai, um, with regards to Maori wardens? Um, are you, I've, I've got a, a partai. Um, how, how, how's the team going? You know, obviously it's a growing team. There's, um, more people coming on board and keen to be involved.
Yes, um, so what, the team's doing well. And what we actually had to do is we had to pull in Maori wardens from throughout the region, from Tewa Karingi, from Porirua, to assist with that, um, process activity. Um, but what we found is we were lacking in some, um, vital pieces of resources. Um, and, and perhaps, um, there's a, there would be a flow-on effect from having, um, capabilities, resources in place to recruitment. Um, so it's well and good to go out and for us to recruit, to have that extra layer of support, um, is probably something we need, we need to look at with council.
Kia ora, I've got a couple more partai, one from councillor Fitzsimons.
Uh, Kia ora Gabriel, can you just tell us, um, you commented around the resources and the protest and that, that, you know, we weren't able to secure them. Are those discussions with council officers ongoing at this time? Is there a formal process set up to ensure that those, that the issues that were raised in there are not lost?
Yeah, so there are two things, uh, um, and answer to your question, uh, uh, and that would be, uh, one, there is a process. And I just want to acknowledge councillor Fitzsimons', um, role in, in assisting us through that process. And, um, excuse me, also the, um, that, that is ongoing between offices and, um, the minister's, various relevant ministers' office, um, whether that be DIA or TPK and assisting us with, um, securing those resources. But also, um, in terms of, um, there are some other things, um, in the pipeline at the moment, and one of which is exploring a space that's supported either by regional or, or local Wellington City Council for our Maori wardens to operate as a sort of a central hub so that we can, uh, easily respond, um, to ko papa events and incidents throughout Wellington City. And that has got, um, been spearheaded, we, um, he's recently left his role, but, um, Scott Gallagher of, um, General Manager of Metlink and Paolo also working in to explore, um, a possible space. So there are a number of, um, inquiries going on, um, to support our, our wardens. But of course, as you know, councillor Fitzsimons, that doesn't happen overnight.
No, good, I'm just glad there is. And obviously, please do come to us because we want to find ways to support you.
Kia ora. Um, I've got a partai from Mayor Foster.
Kia ora Gabriel, and thank you for the work you're doing. Um, can you just be a bit more specific? I'm, I'm picking up that there's some equipment and there's some, um, uh, and some, uh, a base to operate from of the kind of things you're talking about. What are the things which, so you can just be really specific about the kind of things you're after? And just following from councillor Fitzsimons' question about how we might help out.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, so, uh, the things you've named are some of those, um, sorts of resources. I mean, uh, from, um, support with, um, even, um, so technology, um, support.
So communications, that kind of thing.
Communications, uh, access to, um, programs or networks, um, the ability to, um, uniform our Maori, Maori wardens, out there, equip them with the resources, what we call our duty gear. So our day-to-day, um, uniforms, um, things like torches and so forth. Um, so a lot of that day-to-day gear, but also, um, it, it could also be, um, tapping into council networks as well. So it's not just the physical resources, but human resource, uh, expertise and that sort of thing. Um, so we are also working with the police on some of that. Uh, police is trying to support us with, um, the ability to mobilize and deploy wardens via, uh, transportation. And that could look like something like vans and other equipment. So I think what, what's happened is the protest, um, highlighted for us the gaps that exist, but also the opportunities, the opportunities for council and through this strategy and future strategies to make this a, an ongoing priority, particularly with what's happening in the city, Mr. Mayor, the gang activity, um, and many of those whanau whom we know.
Kia ora Gabriel, thank you.
Um, ngamahi kia kui, um, thank you so much, um, iteraanga tira, um, Gabriel, for coming to korero with us today and sharing, um, the Tapu Teraanga whanau, um, experiences at the moment. And also for the Maori warden, we really appreciate you taking the time to, um, to come and do so. Kia paeto, ahi ahi, Kia ora.
Kia ora, ngamahi.
Kia ora. All right, uh, Kamati, that brings us to the end of public participation. So what we're going to do now is we've got morning tea and we will, uh, ask that people can get back here really promptly at eleven twenty because kura, um, will be online, um, to join us, um, when, uh, Karapa will introduce the paper. So, um, the morning tea is in the room next door, but also in the big room. So, um, our public participants who are here in, uh, Ti Nana, you're welcome to come and join us for morning tea. It's a great opportunity to just have a bit of a follow-up korero. And I'm sure there'll be, um, much to discuss. So, um, we'll see you back here in twenty-five minutes. And our public participants, you're welcome to come back here after, welcome to be in the other room to watch. It's being, um, live streamed in there and obviously.
...anaki fa'anui, pu'akaukisom block sinematras. That he will have some kura'ra and then hopefully by the time we've got through that, we'll have kura'ra online, that is the plan. Thank you everybody for being patient. So we will move on to the next part of the agenda. So no ma'a karepa wau kita kura'ra iti kura'ra. So I welcome you karepa to introduce this report and maybe also introduce the people with you just because I know that, you know, we've got people who might not know who's who. Kewa'ra.
Kapai. Tēnā koe a kaitema'raikura. Oitira tēnāiau teutoko anaingamihua tukana ra ki rongai tepui te naira. Ki te fa'anui tanga'ua kaikura'ra iha'ra mai ra ite atanai, ki te kura'ra kia koutou. Naira te tautoko. Oitira ki nga mana'finoa koutou kua'ra mai ra kanohi ipurangi ki te tautoko iti kaupapa. Teate'aua taranaki o'anui ngatitoa koutou ra kua'ra mai ra koe hoki te na Liz emihiana kia koutou te na tatau.
It's an exciting day indeed and we do need to continue in the spirit that most of the speakers have added today in acknowledging mana'finoa, both through the representatives to your committee, Liz but also mana'finoa who have arrived, Pakai'ra and Kusila as well as Anuri of Taranaki Munga
With our wonderful new agreement that we signed only on Friday last week, it's great to see our mana finua parties fully involved in the work that we here at Wellington City Council are doing. With our wonderful hui in the middle to remind us of that agreement as well. So tina koutou, just as a way of introduction, Johnny as manager of strategy has come on board just before Christmas, I think, to help paddle this wakarau vows, I guess, to use that metaphor. And Akushla Dee, I keep saying Akarul because that's what I had known my tu'ehine here as, but Dee has been helping us from day one with the strategy as well as our key writer, which was about 12 months ago. And of course, Pakai'ra, they won't be a new face to many of you around the table, but is here with mana finua as well to support today. So it's, it is exciting to put this on the table in front of you at the iwi. It is aligned to the direction and I don't think there's a lot more I can say about the direction that hasn't already been said by the speakers. But it is aligned to your direction that you have clearly given us as an organisation to work with our mana finua and that's evident with them here today. It's aligned to your direction to us to co-design something with the community and we have spent over a year now going out with our wonderful Wellington community to be able to design up what is the strategy that you find in front of you. And that includes the likes of our CCOs as you've heard from this morning, that includes the likes of our businesses and our community, our organisations, everyone that's in this community that finds Wellington as a place to either live, to play, to work or otherwise. We've been really determined to be able to do that in an authentic manan hunting way for Maori and it is thanks to the likes of Dee. And also Naina who in those very, very early days picked up this kaipapa and pushed it for, for you as a, as a city council. So it is unique, it is different, it is significant as well in all of those kinds of ways. It's unique because it's not necessarily how we would create normal strategies in, in the world. It is through a Maori metaphor, it is through a really strong base that comes from an ao Maori, from ma toranga Maori. That might mean that it's a little bit confusing in some aspects, that might mean that some of our community needs to take a bit of time to get to understand it and get to see what the kind of direction is. But I believe that that will make our community a lot more stronger once we, we have some time to sit down and look at those kinds of things. It does focus on four key aspects for Maori, as you can see in there. It's no news to any of you that language, culture, identity are important for Maori in the city. It's nothing that they haven't told us for the last 182 plus years. It's no shock to any of you that the environment is a really key aspect to them as well. Both our land, both our water, all of those things that are also priorities of yours as the council has set out through your current LTP as well. I guess in the, the other two aspects are focused on people, the wellbeing of our people and the wellbeing of our community, which is again, one of the really key instrumental things that all of you around the table are here for. And intertwined into all of that is our need to do this with others and to do this in partnership with mana finua, with Maori, to, to do this with our community as opposed to them. So those are the sort of key things that I think you'll find that's in there. It is an enabling strategy, Iwama, it is an enabling strategy which has set that high level direction for you. It's interesting to see that recently statistics New Zealand has put out that by 2040, about 40% of the population will be Maori. And actually over half, if, if you add in the Pacific community into that, we go over the half of New Zealanders will have some kaipapa to temu'ana nui ya'akiwa. If you look at that too, about 50% of the Maori population at that time will be under 35. And so as you've heard this morning from our rangatahi representatives, the focus on our rangatahi, the focus on the future, the focus on getting the things right for not only 10 years ahead, but actually 40, 50 years ahead of us today is really important. And intertwined into that, I'm, I'm not a data or statistics people, but intertwined into that, if you look at the current population of say deaf children in Aotearoa, 44% of them are Maori. And so when we hear from the likes of the accessibility advisory group this morning, putting a spotlight on those kinds of communities that are within our whata community, it's really great to see that they're in support of this kind of strategy as well that will work for them, that will work for our takatapuhi communities, that will work for, I'm going to miss somebody out now by starting on that, that, that team. But it's going to, it's going to work for a lot of people. And over the last five years, if we're looking in the, the sort of economic wellbeing of Maori, over the last five years, the economic portfolio has increased by 60% in the Maori space. That's to over 70 billion in Aotearoa and New Zealand. So if we think about the next five years, if we think about the next 10 years, there's going to be lots of significant change. And you as Wellington City Council are going to be steaming ahead in the really strong way with adopting a strategy. No one else in the country has been as brave and as bold as you are to be able to do this, with the exception of Auckland who's legislated to do this. So I don't think there's much more to say, except for I'm miheto all of those people who have been involved in this kaipapa. I know usually in these settings, a lot of you will look to us as the three or four sitting here in front of you, but actually it's been, to not sound cliche, it's been the work of a village, the work of a lot of people who have been having an input into this over the whole entire 12 months since the deliberations of LTP last year, this time approximately last year. But definitely through the leadership of the likes of Dee and Naina in the early days and through into Johnny and his team in the recent days, it's been great to put this on in front of you. So I'm going to introduce you to mana finua, to the CEO, is again, no new face to you, but the CEO of Taranaki O'anui, Lee, to have a kurrero on behalf of mana finua, one of our key partners in the strategy. Kayakoe, kaitaku toa kana.
Tena koe, karepa, and ma'orena koutou, gamii o teata ki a koutou katua iti kaunihere o Poneke. Ng'a kaikau'nihere o Poneke, ng'a mema o topu'oro'oro rangaranga. Me'oku fa'anga o ngati toa o teatia'ua o taranaki fa'anui, ngamii nunui ki a koutou katoui tenei ata. Ma'orena, my morning salutations to you all. We are getting to a brisk morning and great days. To, to Mayor Andy Foster, ma'orena, to our, our Chair Councillor Jill Day, ma'orena, Chief Executive Barbara McKeerow and members of the Wellington City Council Executive Team, tina koutou katua. Just before I start, I just wanted to flip back to Friday and the, the amazing afternoon that we had together and reflecting on that. And it was, it was really an honour for Teatia'ua, Taranaki fa'anui and our ngati toa fa'ano. We were very humbled to be able to pour for you into our marae pippetea. And it was great to meet a number of you that I personally haven't met and be able to put names to faces. So thank you for a wonderful, wonderful afternoon and put together by temata'aho aronui and thank you very much for that. Right. Thanks very much for the opportunity to participate in the kurrero this morning and about our tupaki ora Maori strategy for Wellington City Council and our iwi of Teatia'ua, Taranaki fa'anui and our fa'anga ngati toa rangatira. One of the things that stands out for me is, is this, the tupaki ora Maori strategy provides a pathway for our collaboration and partnership. And, and, and very similar to what karepa says, it, it actually provides that connection, that kaipapa back to our finua, back to our ma'ana, back to our awa and our streams. And most importantly, I guess, is, is, is back to our people and not necessarily just iwi Maori, but it's also back to our, our, our Maori community, but just the Wellington City community at large. Just the diverse range of, of people that we have in our city. So although it is a Maori strategy, it actually does, it does give connections into other areas of our community. I'd also just like to make some comments around the, the effort by the temata'aho aronui team, karepa, Johnny, Amanda and supported by, by mapuna, which is Dee Shia Shia, and the efforts that went into capture that vision, the objectives, the principles that we're going to work with to attain the pa'watu, the pa'tata, pa'tafiti, and the, and our pa'wuranga and, you know, our near to far horizons for, for us to achieve in partnership together. I, I really do need to make comment to, to karepa and his team because I really do believe that the efforts have gone in here have been exemplary. When we, when we look at the document, you know, yes, as karepa said, it's, it's actually very different. It's quite different to what you would normally receive as a strategy document. I, I love it. And I love it because it's different and I love it because it, it really does simply spell out what, what's required to be done. And, you know, we look at the elements of that, of that waka and the waka journey that we, we take together. The, the destinations that we will achieve together. And, you know, as, as karepa's touched on, and I'll, I'll just, I'll, I'll, I'll just reiterate what they are. You know, Wellington is recognised locally and globally as a culturally rich, a historic with its own history and its own narrative. I, I think that's really strong. It's, it's, you know, we have a harbour that we can really, really focus on. We have a city that's right next to it. When we include the other, the second one is around tia'u Maori and the use of taro, a ways to celebrate our culture and language. You know, our, our language is, is not just for our iwi or Maori, it's for everyone to use. I think that's fantastic. Our third one around iwi and Maori, active participants in decision making. That's a really big one. And, and we have that opportunity now to be able to do that with you and alongside you. And, and lastly, the number four, iwi and Maori, if you like, in, are supported and prioritised in those areas which we all know, we've spoken about around our social and cultural, environmental and economic, you know, the wellbeing of, of our people within our city and that extends out further as well. So partnering with Wellington City Council with our tupaki ora, our Maori strategy allows us to co-navigate our waka, our waka ho'dua. Therefore our journey is actually reached together. One doesn't get there before the other. So that's really important. And just finally, we see the tupaki ora Maori strategy as an anchor and it's an anchor for our city, it's an anchor for our iwi, it's an anchor for our Maori community at large. And, and, and I think that, that the strategy we have now will, will, will hold, will hold us for a long time to come from today. So thank you very much and I like things nice and short. Kewra.
Is there anything else that needs to be shared from down your way?
I think we're good there. Thank you.
I feel like I'm trying to do that stalling like in my favourite movie when I was a child, The Sound of Music, when they're trying to stall so that they can escape. This time we're trying to, I'm trying to stall so that someone can get here, but it looks like that might not happen for this particular part. But we'll move on now just to see if there are any partai from the committee around this paper and the strategy. Councillor Condi.
Kewra, thank you. I just wanted to follow up on comments from, from Re'ere noa rangi Pope, who came and spoke to us this morning about the importance of our awa. And I know that daylighting of streams is something that kind of came out in some of the early conversations and would just like to kind of understand where you see that sitting within the strategy and how it's captured in there.
Tena tata katua, kewra councillor. The, the critical link within the strategy is in the atia'ake na te tae'au caring for the environment. And both within the short term and long term actions really speak to supporting existing and new initiatives led by mana finua anchored in sort of Maori knowledge systems that, that enable that the regeneration of wellbeing and, and certainly within that context. And we've heard it through a number of our speakers this morning and certainly clearly affirmed through mana finua is, is around the wellbeing of our waterways. And within that, in terms of regenerating what, what the strategy speaks to is the modi, the modi order, the life force, the wellbeing, connection. And certainly within that context, daylighting is, is part of a range of tools to, to enable those streams and waterways to breathe again. And to enable connection and, and certainly the importance of the work of at a catchment level, if you, if you like. And certainly Wellington is a city of water. So within that context, we are developing a council action plan and, and that's where those sort of high level actions will then be interpreted in, in across council business units and CCOs in terms of how we give life and action and delivery to those aspects. And then just want to also acknowledge the ilandia and the partnering work they are doing with mana finua in, in kau modi ora te kaifarafara. So, so it is significant, it's important, work is underway, but certainly through the action plan, we'll, we'll, we'll bring that to life and being able to bring that back to this committee around actions moving forward. So kewra.
Kewra, thank you for that partai and great timing. I'm going to hand back over to karepa because kura has joined us.
Kewra, kura's also one that doesn't really need an introduction, but kura, tena koe, te tipua o taranaki o'anui o teatia'ua, kaitaku toa kana, kaua te terakoe kewra. Kura is the current Chair of Teru Nanganui o Teatia'ua ki te upoko teka and has joined us online. So kayakoe, kura, kou'iti, Lee, ana korrero, ana kayakoe te wa.
Tua taimihirawa tara ki a koutoui nga kaikau'nihere en'ona, kaitua, huri rauni te tepunai. Firstly, thank you, thank you councillors and karepa. Probably in alignment with what Lee has expressed, the two piki orders about our expression of our cultural, our cultural expression and views of how we see the future of, of, of where we want to navigate. And how it, how it is a very close relationship from the, from our signing last week with the ta'ka'i here. It's basically the, the map, the plan that we wish to work collaboratively to help co-design, co-lead towards a better future, not only for mana finua but for all Maori, but also to sharing under Article Four of the treaty, the, the ability to express our culture through our cultural expression and the things that we do. Tupaki ora is an expression of that, born out of the ta'ka'i here and they both actually, both documents actually complement one another. The Tupaki ora is the, the map of how we, where we wish to go. And the ta'ka'i here document is the vehicle in which we as collectively, both council, mana finua and Maori will navigate the challenges that we have ahead of, exciting challenges, I must say, exciting challenges. So to cut a long story short, the, the double hull canoe is about us working collaboratively and navigating, co-leading, co-designing. So that I believe will only further enrich not only council, but enrich the wider community of who we as mana finua are. And, and to share it not only with Maori, but we want to share a possible alternative way of how we navigate our next 10 years. Although it's pretty short, we'd like to, how do we navigate, but also bring along our future leaders that are coming through to take it to the next level of success. So I don't have too much to say. I fully support Tupaki ora because it complements our thoughts, our way of thinking, our worldview and it acknowledges the commitment that council is showing that when asked for our narrator, there's a commitment, commitment to developing a stronger relationship based on our past into the present and setting the platform for the future. And I just want to conclude this, that there with the saying, kote tatai arorangi he kaya rataki tara. And it all has to do with navigation and moving forward, that the objects, the objects of the sky determine the actions of the day. And so we've set the Tupaki Ora, which is the objects of our long-term vision. And that's setting the platform for how we today must navigate to a better future. Norera mihirawa tu'aki akoto.
Tēnā koe, tarangatira, Kia ora. Thank you for jumping out of your busy day to come and share your fakaro with us. We really appreciate that, Kura. And thank you also, Lee, online. And I also do want to acknowledge Pekaida, who's sitting with the Atenana today. Tēnā koe, yamahi. So I actually do have a partai and I don't know if anyone else does as well. I haven't got anyone else on the list. But my question is, sometimes when we've agreed to strategies and things before, people have queried. When we have things within the strategy that council doesn't directly deliver on, so you know, like health, all those sorts of things. And I'm just wondering if, because obviously this has a complete Te Amaori lens, whether you can help us, I guess, to sort of understand the absolute importance of actually speaking to those things that we don't necessarily directly deliver. So obviously I have some ideas in fakaro, but I'd really love to hear from the team because this strategy is amazing with the way that it brings through those values. And I think it would be good to be able to articulate that so that people are really clear and understand our role in this city. Kia ora.
Yeah, a good point, councillor. I think the, the korero we heard from our community is that actually we need to start thinking a bit more holistic and actually widen our sort of scope as opposed to these are the services that we deliver alone. It is not the council's responsibility, for instance, to revitalise Tarero Maori in, in the country or in any of the cities that they're in. But we do have a contribution towards that and we can ensure that the enabling conditions are there to enable Tarero Maori to be revitalised in our city. There are efforts that we can do within our remits, within our services that we provide as a city council that support the revitalisation of Tarero Maori. And so the strategy in the form that you see it in front of you is thinking more in the holistic wider kind of views that are important for Maori in the city. The challenge, as Johnny has talked about, is that over the next little wee while, we're going to then simmer this down on your approval today. We're going to simmer this down into an action plan, which will then clearly articulate what is your contribution towards these big goals. But actually, the strategy as it is, is going to enable a blueprint to be here in the city for anybody who picks this up and read it. Anybody from our CCOs, anybody to a organisation, a community residence organisation, anybody as a company here in Wellington could pick up this kind of strategy and find themselves a connection to this, which will support the aspirations of not only Manu Finua, but actually of Maori inside the city as well.
Rowa. Are there any other partai? Nope, okay, we're going to move on to the paper now. So, got to find my bits of paper. So thank you very much. All right, so I'm going to move the paper. And then I've asked Liz Kelly if she would like to second it. So I think, I feel like this paper has been very well introduced today already. And there has been some amazing fakaro shared. So in some ways, I'm not going to repeat what's been said there, but I'm going to speak from a bit of a council experience and just, you know, where we're at as a council. So, tuatahi, eti iwi o tine rohi o Te Atiawa, ki te upoko teika, ngāte tu'arangatira nei rātima hi maiaha, kiakoto. Tuaroa kia aku hua, no te kōni hira, tine tama hi kiakoto. And I would particularly like to acknowledge from Manu Finua in the room today. We have a few people here, but would particularly like to acknowledge you, Liz Kelly, for being with us at the table and for the journey that you've been on with us for the last wee while. We really, really do appreciate having you around the table. And I'd also like to acknowledge Pekaida Rei, who has, on my journey on council, provided a lot of total call support to me personally, but to many people at council and helps to guide us. And I want to acknowledge you for taking the time to be here with us today, Pekaida. And also to our rangatira online as well, who have popped out of their busy ko'apa to, to be here to support the strategy. And that shows how involved Manu Finua have been along the way. And obviously there are many people who couldn't be here today, who, who send their thoughts and wishes to council through this process. And I'd really like to take the time to acknowledge our public participants, the CCOs, the NGOs, the people out there who are doing the mahi in our city and really helping to show us how we can move forward. There's so much richness that has been shared and I feel like we've all learnt something here today. And we have so much to learn from each other in this city. And I think it's really important for us to acknowledge as a council that, you know, we're on a journey too. And as has been said, this is a map for us and, you know, we want people to help and add to our map. I received an email that I did just want to quickly share from Liz Green from the Basin Reserve. She wanted to share that she's enjoyed the collaboration and engagement to date with the development of the strategy and has admired the dedication and enthusiasm throughout the process. And that this is a special, special piece of work. And, and they, they really can't wait to play their part and bring it to life. And it's really fantastic to hear from organisations who are on the ground, experiencing the support of Mataho Aranui Council. So when I arrived at council this morning, I walked in and I thought there's something missing. And so we went and had a korero and we made sure that the hoi from our agreement last week, Ta'kai Here, came into the room to, I guess, remind us of the importance of Tupaki Ora and, and collection with Ta'kai Here. As, as Kura has acknowledged, Ta'kai Here is, is our vehicle. And for me, it's also that reminder that we, we want to keep moving. And this is, this is the way that we focus and we work together to keep moving. And also at the, at the same time, not leaving each other behind. And I think important to acknowledge the Tupaki Ora, the waka ho'ura and the fact that, that, that waka is, is, is the basin which we can, we can exist together and we can move forward together. So I want to acknowledge Karapa for your guidance and your leadership and to Barbara for your support and guidance and leadership. But to Karapa, you know, bringing these strategies to council in, in a year is actually a pretty big, a mammoth effort. And I really do want to acknowledge your drive and your leadership and the way that you've done that to bring everyone along with you. So thank you. It's a, it's an honour to have seen that, that work. And I do want to acknowledge that Mataho Aranui has been acknowledged as a force of nature. And I'm experiencing that and just feel so encouraged to see. And I'm going to say all the names again because I think it's really exciting. And to councillors, I'll explain why I think that is in a minute. But to Naina, Johnny, Manda, ana kohie paratene te poiaki no, Silas, tafiau ali, Aklisha Dee, and Miriamah. You know, councillors, when we resourced council to be able to deliver on this last year in the long-term plan, look at what we've, look at the people that we've brought to our council to deliver. The talent is, is amazing. And, and I think it's important that, you know, we see and we understand that those decisions have a direct impact on the fact that we can bring a strategy in under a year that tells us, you know, that we can do this, we can, we can map our way forward. And I also want to acknowledge that, that the team has worked really hard today to help all of our public participants feel really welcomed. I'm not sure if councillors realise, but public participants were all welcomed into the room next door and had a karakia and talked about what was coming in the day. And I thought, what a wonderful example of manaki tanga. And I hope that these are some things that we can actually pick up as a council and do across the board, not just when we're doing a strategy like Tupaki Ora, but actually on a daily basis, we make sure that people who come and share with us are really welcomed and, and helped to feel comfortable because it's not a comfortable place for many people. So thank you to the team for your mahi on that because that is, it makes a difference. And I do again want to acknowledge and remember people who were here before, who have helped us to get to this point. So to Nikikaru Rene, ana te puri tanga, and also to our dear Billy, that, that they have helped us to, to come to this, this place today. So our city is facing some challenges, just a few. I think most Wellington, Wellingtonians know them, but I will just list a few of them. Obviously, we're facing a housing shortage. Impacts of climate change being seen across our city as, as a daily occurrence. And our role to look at mitigation and adaptation, we need to make sure we have strong strategies. We have opportunities to implement a transport network for the future. We know that we have a need for water infrastructure that actually works. And that acknowledges te mana o te wai. And we've heard lots about our awa this morning and, and the role that Tupaki Ora can play in helping us to improve on that. We have city safety, wellbeing and social cohesion challenges. And we will talk about that a bit more in a minute around Maori wardens. But you know, we see that when we can provide resourcing, then we can have responses that work for our community. And we have, so we have big challenges that must be faced and responded to and solved. And so this strategy holds the answers and will change the city for the better. It will mean Wellington is a better place to fix our housing, water and transport. If, if council had properly listened and shared power with Manu Finua in the past, I'm confident we wouldn't be facing these problems. And we've actually, I have to say, Liz Kelly can tell us, we've had an example of that in recent times when we listen and we hear different perspectives and perspectives that have been here for a very long time. It does change the way that we, we make our decisions. But the past is the past. Gone are the days when these strategies and approaches are stored in the bottom drawer and reviewed every few years. This one will inform council decisions on every important issue facing Te Funganoia Tara. Tupaki Ora is about the future. And I do just want to acknowledge at this point that, because I know I've had some conversations with people from the media and they will still want to, they keep asking me, but what's it going to look like? And that we have an action plan coming and hopefully in August, where we will really be talking about some of the nitty gritty things that we'll see. And we, you know, people are aware of some of the opportunities. But today, we really wanted to focus on the fact that we've got to, we've got to get the how we do these things right. Because sometimes if you focus on the end goal, you damage the relationships that you're trying to build. So we need to make sure that we, we, we do this in a, in a good way. And because to me, this strategy is all about relationships. And we can see that with the conversations and what we've heard today. And so there is actually, if you want to bring up on the screen, it's already there. We have actually got an amendment. I said that we weren't going to have amendments today. Because obviously this strategy, and it's really important that we acknowledge that this has been co-constructed and that we want to keep the integrity of that. But I think that this amendment actually provides us as a, it's a good reminder as to why we need this strategy. So obviously we heard from Gabriel about Maori wardens and the challenges through the protests. And it was really hard for council to respond to that. And it wasn't any person's fault. There's no kind of, someone didn't make the right decision. It's just that it didn't really sit easily with, within our processes and what we needed to do. So it sort of sits there as a, as an example of some of the things we need to do to, to move into this space so that we can respond faster and more appropriately. So it's really just talking about how we can support Maori wardens going forward. I did just want to talk about on page 35 of the strategy. It talks about Auckland City Council having an independent statutory board. And when I got onto council, one of the things I was like, how can we have one of those? And, and then did a bit of research and found out that when the government agreed to the, the super city in Auckland, they kind of said, well, no one else is going to get this. But I don't think that this council should hold back. And I think that, as I've said to many people, the processes that we've put in place to have Manu Finua at the table and to have Maori ward, they need more interrogation and more, more opportunity. Having one seat at the table as ngāte tua or one seat as taranaki fa'anoi, it's very hard at times to make change. So we need to think about what we can do to increase that representation. And it may look quite different to what it is now, but we've made, we've made some steps. And so I want to acknowledge that all of the things that we've done, te tōi, who Manu Finua seeks Maori ward, Ta'kai Here, you know, they're all our commitments to the things that we want to see change in the city. But they actually are what make Tupaki Ora possible. So you know, it's having those relationships and it's having those aspirations that mean that we can then map our way forward, which is what has been done so beautifully in this strategy. And I quickly just want to speak to the Taking a Village. And, and want to just speak to, I was talking to Ross in the break and he pointed out that Alex, who he was talking about in, in his korero, is actually photographed in our strategy. And what a great way to connect ko'apa that we have happening at council with the impact that it has on our community and the flow on that it has. So thank you, Ross, for bringing us that, that korero. And also actually for reminding us that our rangatahi, when we put the, the time in and the support, we receive so much more than what we've put in as a community. And so to Jackson and Rere Noa Rangi, who have taken the time to share with us today, this strategy is for you and for your mukapuna. This is for the future. And I think my, my partai before about the, about the fact that this strategy speaks to things that, that we don't necessarily deliver in this city. It really came to my, the, the top of my mind early on when I was a councillor and I had someone come and speak to me from the north and they were talking about the challenges for some of our Maori fa'ano, porirua and even tāwa and, and within Wellington, getting to the hospital, that if you don't have a car or if you can't afford to pay for the parking when you get there, it's really tough. And this is, you know, often you need quite urgent special care in that situation. And that, you know, at a surface level, we think, well, what can we do to, to improve that? Well, actually, there's quite a lot. And obviously, let's get Wellington moving in my mind as something that we have to focus on as being a way of helping people access healthcare, all the other parts of our city that make life good. So that holistic thinking that Karapa spoke about is so important. And I think that is where this strategy changes the way that council operates. Because we don't, we, we need to break down those silos and that thinking where we say, this is our box, this is what we sit in and we just do that. We actually think more creatively and we say, we can make decisions which make this easier for people. So again, I do want to acknowledge councillors for your support and resourcing council, our council to be able to deliver for Maori. And as we've heard, actually, everyone in the city, because so many Wellingtonians want us to do better for Maori and want us to do better for everybody. And I want to acknowledge also, Kura, the other day, when we were having a korero about this strategy, he also brought in the fakaro around a waka ho'ura travelling as a flotilla. And that that's something that we, we can really be thinking about. And I think we already are and Karapa's team is working on that around working with CCOs and other organisations. We are a stronger city when we move together with all sorts of people, organisations. And I want to thank you, Kura, for that fakaro because I think it is really important that we, we remember that we are one part and the role that we can play as a council is that kind of bringing it together. And so I'm just going to finish off now. I'm sure there'll be something I've forgotten, but I'm lucky because I do get a write-off reply. So I can, I can pick up anything that I've forgotten if I have. But I do just want to acknowledge, Karapu Keetapu Dentis said to me, maybe it was me and councillor Paul a while ago, I think. He was talking about, when we talk about decolonisation and, you know, the way that we can change our country for the better, he shared that he likes the term re-indigenisation. And so that's what I see this as, is an opportunity to re-indigenise Te Funganoia Tara. And, and it helps us to think of it in a positive framework. And I think we need to, we need to be in this space. This strategy is about moving forward and being positive. And I am going to seek some advice on this amendment. Sorry, I've just had a note saying, can you seek some advice on the amendment? So I'll do that quickly and then I'll hand over to Liz, who's seconding. So I'll hand over to you first, Karapa, and I think there might be others who want to speak. Thank you, thanks for that.
Kia ora. So the strategy is really clear in the first point around supporting and partnering with Maori in the city. And so that includes the Maori wardens. And through the action plan, you might see some collaboration kind of things come through in that. But I don't see this as a change to the actual current strategy that we have, but more of something that we can further support through the likes of Pooniki Promise, through our community guardians, capable guardians that we have as well here in the city. And so I do wonder if Sahai or Jenny, I think is online. Jenny's online might have something more to add from that. I would, I would just put out there that we are supporting Maori wardens. So the, the the point that says, yeah, that we start to support them kind of thing, that, that kind of would not be how I would with that. Jenny, did you have something to add?
Trying to unmute. Look, we, we will and we do support them. And we're doing a piece of work around capable guardians of the city. And we very much will be and are including them in that discussion. And that will be a discussion in, around support, not only with a base, but with appropriate equipment, equipment and connecting into all the other capable guardians around the city. So very much so, part of our work.
Kia ora. I'm just reading that wording and I don't think it's, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't insinuate that we're not supporting them. It's just stating that we do support them. But if, because they continue, I'm happy with that, continue to support. Anyway, I think we will move on. I think that's fine.
Excuse me, sorry, through your chair. I have some amended wording that also acknowledges and connects the two with the Pooniki Promise. Would that be helpful?
How about I have a look at it while we get Liz to speak to the. How about I have a look at it while we get Liz to speak to the paper, Kia ora.
Okay. Kia ora, kato kato. This is a really exciting time. I'm really excited about what's going on in the city, what's going on in this council. I loved what Kura said, that Ta'ka Heiri is the vehicle. And today, Tupiki Oru is the map to make things happen. What I guess, I see is a visionary council that has looked into the future. We heard today with Karipa talking about how the demographic of our city is going to change hugely, as well as already the impacts that Maori are making on the economy with the 70 billion that they are contributing. And this is a 60% economic growth within the city. So I see these things that this council is putting forward as really visionary and it's been done in a meaningful way. But what I really wanted to talk to you about, because the kumira doesn't say how sweet it is. So it's really hard for you fellows to say this, but I can say this, sitting at this table. These two significant pieces of work that has happened would not have happened without you guys sitting around the table right now, allowing it to happen, agreeing for it to happen. And then for our CEO over here and her team of management and the team that work at City Council implementing it. So I really want to thank you sincerely for what you guys have done. And I loved what Jill, councillor Day, said on Friday. I loved how she named you individually. I thought that was really spectacular, actually, because it didn't miss anyone out and it really made, it really valued the significance of without you guys agreeing to this happening, we would not have these two significant pieces of work. We would not have Karipa and his team who are pushing these things forward. And I love the way too, that there's a lot of korero around doing this together. And I think that that's significant. But talking about Tupiki Oru right now, I love the strategy. I'm a visionary person, so I love the way that it's all connected to the waka and how each part is represented and is significant in making this strategy work. Like the two holes, the two holes is the two worldviews coming together and working together. And I think too, Tariana Turia said this one time, the significance of a waka is that for it to get anywhere, you need to all row together. Because if you don't all row together and in the same direction, you don't get anywhere. So I love the imagery of this strategy. There's a big focus on environment and I think that's really cool in me personally, that's spot on. But the goals and the outcomes in this strategy, they're strong, they're resolute and they're focused. And I think these goals are aspirational and they do represent a future state of the type of city that we want to leave to our mokapuna. And, well, for you Tam, it's a little way off, but, but, but for, mokapuna, I'm talking about mokapuna. But for me, I can tell you that everything I do now in my life is for my mokapuna. It's for their, it's for their future. And yeah, and I just want to thank you all. I thank you all. And I also want to just take this time too, since I've got the floor. I just want to take this time to thank you all sincerely for the way that you've all welcomed me and treated me. I really appreciate that. I really, I really do. I really appreciate that. And I just totook all this work and I'm looking forward to what else happens. I'm looking forward to the action plan now. Kapoe, Kia ora.
Kia ora, I've just had a look at the wording from the amendment and shared it with councillors Paul and Fitzsimons, who were keen to see it come forward. We are going to leave it as it is and it's partly because we want to make sure that it's not just limited to the Pooniki Promise, that there will be potentially grants committee might need to look at some stuff. And you know, we just want to make sure that we've got it across. I have added the word continue because I do want to acknowledge that our staff have already started. That process is underway. But now I'm going to invite councillor Paul to speak, Kia ora.
Oh, cool. Yeah, I guess I'll just, I'll begin by joining in my massive and heartfelt thanks to Manu Fenua, Ngatitua, Rangatira, Tiatau, Taranaki Fanoi, Hoki. And want to extend, like, can't even put it into words, but extend a massive mahi to Temataho, Aronui and our Maori ka'mahie here at council, in particular to Karipa, Johnny, Ana, Manda, Naina, everybody. And everyone, the massive team that we have now, this work is incredible. And Kia kua, Liz, I just want to give a massive mahi to you. And it's been really nice having your auntie vibes around the council. Every time I come in, she's like, oh, girl, you need to eat something. I was like, ah. So it's really nice having you. And I also want to acknowledge the Rangatahi that are in the room at the moment. People who have come to listen to us here today and see the way that we do things and also our ka'mahie as well. I think it's a real honour to have you here and you make our city what it is. And being one of you, for not long, I'm going to be 25 on Sunday, so I feel like I'm not a Rangatahi anymore. But, but I, yeah, I'm old. But I just think it is important for us to be at this table and it's important for us to speak our minds and to manifest the future that we hope for ourselves, even when we feel scared and even when our voice shakes. We still have to say it and make it known, the future that we hope for ourselves and our mokapuna, as Liz said. So this strategy, like, when I read it and as it's been introduced to us along the way, is already so, so, so good and forward-thinking and future-focused. But hearing all the public participation this morning really, really just emphasised that even further. Because you can have words on a page and they can be the best words in the world, but it isn't until you see that other people that aren't at council have put so much aspirations into this, into this ko'apapa, that you really see how special, how special this strategy is. It's more than a strategy, it's a ko'apapa. And seeing that, you know, it really enforced that it takes a village. And to see how people, Maori and non-Maori, Tangata Tiriti, Toiwi, Ahoki, how they, how they see a reflection of their aspirations as well, I think was really inspiring to see. When we were first looking at it, the three things I had in my mind that were really important, that I really wanted to see, is there were three things that I was looking for in this ko'apapa and those were housing, justice and Rangatahi. Because it's, for me, it's always about that economic, social, cultural, environmental, Tiriti justice above all else. And in terms of the housing, it was so inspiring to me when we signed that and Karapu Keta Pudentis said that Ta'ka Heiri is about ending homelessness. That was, that was so inspirational. And I don't want to be negative, but when I walk through the city, it's Maori faces that are on the street. And we know that more than half of our homeless population are Maori. And there is something deeply unsettling about Tangata Fenua being homeless on their own lands. So it was amazing for me to see Manda's mahi through Temahana, the strategy to get Fano into homes. I could really see that and feel that Waidua reflected throughout Tupiki Oru. So Ngamahi, Manda. And it was so awesome to hear Gabriel's mahi that they're doing at Tapu Teranga and looking at Papukaianga and being able to house people. And I've spent a lot of time at Tapu Teranga when it was still standing. And that, to me, captures the essence of that farrier as well and the ko'apapa of Matua Bruce Stewart. The other point I wanted to, I really wanted to see was around justice. And having gone to DCM, who support our homeless communities, something that they often talk about is how some of the things that council do can be, we can be pushing Maori into a justice system in which we are already overrepresented in. And I'm thinking about particularly around the policing, but also some of the ways that liquor bans and other devices that council has control over can push Maori into those systems. And so I want to thank Gabriel again for bringing a constructive solution forward with the Maori wardens. And I want to acknowledge the ongoing work of the Maori wardens to present and ko'apapa Maori alternative to policing in our communities. And I want to thank councillor Fitzsimons for this amendment on supporting the Maori wardens and just for your ongoing constructive approach to city safety that looks beyond just policing. Because too many of our people are in prisons. And to acknowledge Nick's korero as well, talking about Tangata Faikaha or Fano Hoa. We know that many Maori who are in prison currently are disabled. They have a learning disability, they are deaf, brain injuries, fetal alcohol syndrome. And so, you know, disability rights and disability justice is a Tiriti issue, is a Maori issue, is a council issue, is an issue for us to all look at. And so seeing their voice reflected as well is just incredible and inspiring. And lastly, just to talk about Rangatahi, I want to really thank you, Ross, for your mahi and for believing in us as Rangatahi Maori. You believed in me before I was on council and you truly believe in us and you bring us here. You've brought Rangatahi to the room, like, you are such a Rangatira in this space. And it was awesome to hear you come and talk to us. As Maori, we're a young population and as Rangatahi Maori in an urban environment, that's a distinct experience. That's a special and unique identity. And, you know, I think this strategy to me has a lot, makes a lot of room for those urban Rangatahi, those urban Maori who are looking to find their waka papa, looking to reconnect with their Rangatira, who are looking to find who they are within a city. It's a really distinct and special experience. And just wanted to acknowledge Dame June Jackson and her mahi that she's done in Auckland for urban Maori. And also Naina for leading this mahi as a Rangatahi Maori, as a young Maori, leading this mahi is extremely inspiring to me. Anyway, that's enough from me, but I just want to say that this, yeah, I just, I love this ko'apapa and will continue to support it and thank you all for your mahi.
Councillor Wolf.
Tenakoi, congratulations. And in the Jewish religion or the Jewish language, we say muzel tov. And those three words actually explain and translate really appropriately to what's gone on over the months and years proceeding to where we've got to today. Ta'ka Heiri and Tupiki Oru are value-based. And I just want to congratulate Karipa in particular and Barbara for bringing Karipa on board. Because you've been actually a game changer in the way that you've incorporated teamwork and inclusiveness. And yeah, I just wish to say tenakoi, Karipa. Also, the same three words explain how I feel about having Liz around the table. It's been an absolute breath of fresh air. And I think that what, the wisdom that you've brought to the table and the motherly approach, as Tam referred to. You know, it's, there's something else that, other than the motherly approach, the warmth and the wisdom is fantastic. I just want to move on just a little bit. There will be people in our community that won't understand what we've achieved today. And to them, I say, don't be fearful, don't be threatened. We're actually moving forward together. And the approach that we've taken is balanced, fair and reasonable. And what I would urge, there will be detractors, I would urge them to actually read the documents. Because the documents are really, really well put together. And instead of taking things out of context, and our media sometimes only have 400 words to deal with, take the full context of what Ta'ka Heiri and Tupiki Oru actually are. Because I think that there'll be a greater understanding and a greater ability to move forward together if that takes place. Finally, there's a lot of people to be thanked. And I think that Tam and Jill, and Jill in particular and Tam, thank you, tenakoi. And I'm not giving you the words, but you know, you know, this is a great achievement. But there are a lot of people to be thanked. Just at the end, that little amendment that was brought forth, and I really treat it that that has been brought forth. Because during the parliamentary occupation, Barbara managed to bring in our Maori wardens to escort the college kids through the, and it was a game changer as well. The Maori wardens have mana and they handle themselves in a way that is very different to perhaps policing. And that over my life, I've seen the Maori wardens in all sorts of situations. And I just have complete and total respect and regard for them. And I think that it's really important that when we think about Capital Guardians, that our Maori wardens are very much a part of that with our existing Capital Guardians. And it was really lovely and wonderful to think that there is going to be that parity in the way that they'll be resourced. And I think that that again is something that's really special. So I'll just finish with the words that I started with, tenakoi, congratulations and muzel tov.
Kia ora, councillor Matthews.
I was trying to get my hand up to be the first Tangata Tiriti speaker, but councillor Wolf piped me at the post. Just really quickly, I, first of all, to extend my thanks to Manu Fenua, to Tiatau, Taranaki Fanoi and Ngatitoa, Rangatira. It's a pleasure to be able to work with you. And I guess what I've been describing, this experience, I felt this on Friday and here, that I feel lucky to be here and now. And, you know, I felt so privileged to be able to sign Ta'ka Heiri. And I feel so privileged to be able to vote my support for Tupiki Oru. And, but they do say, you make your own luck. And I think by enlarge, our luck has been made by councillor Jill Day. And, you know, some people, you know, not everybody can say what a difference they make on this council. And when you leave, you will have made such a difference. And transformational in a short period of time through your leadership. And now, you know, so, so well supported by Tam and others, that, you know, I'm just like, I'm proud to be here with you. And I don't want to sort of mix the metaphors too much because we're very clearly on the waka metaphor. But I've also been thinking about, you know, plant-based, you know, that we're, actually, the decisions that we've made, we are now starting to see to grow. And I talked about those decisions as planting the seeds. And then Ana said, Teriputama was digging the hole before then. So it is like this kind of work and now the tree will grow and the actions will come out of it. And I'm really, really excited to see that. And I just want to thank you, Tam, also for your korero around disability and, you know, the importance. And I thought it was so great to see Nick here today and that, you know, it really took me back to the wonderful presentation and discussion that we had at AAG. And to see it in the document. see it in the document. You know, like I don't, I am sorry, but that doesn't always happen. And it was really amazing to feel that, that community who I feel like I kind of bring here with me, even though I'm not part of it, you know, bring their voice with me to see that they have been listened to. And, and actually that there was already a knowing and, you know, and a listening before, before we even got together. So that was very special. So thank you, everyone. It's great and lucky to be here.
Councillor Conde, kewala.
Kewala. I just wanted to start by, thank you everyone for the work on, on Takahere and Tupiki ora and really reflecting on the metaphor of the wakahorua and the hui and how powerful I've been finding that to kind of shape my thinking about our relationship. And one of the things that's been really key for me is thinking that, you know, when you've got the hui or the paddle, sometimes you steer and sometimes you paddle together. And what I see as part of the wero that's actually embedded in Takahere is that sometimes we as council will need to take our hands off the tiller. And so that Manu Finua can steer. It's so hard for us. But that's, I think there's, there's some, some really, really powerful challenges embedded in those metaphors that I'm looking forward to rising to those challenges in the future. And, and then I want to go on a little bit of a tangent into a specific issue that's kind of been on my mind and kind of shows, I think, some of the journey that I've been on and that I think we'll start to see with more Takahere, Tupiki ora, and then the action plan. And just talk about, you know, the daylighting of streams. And when I went on to the Merrill Task Force on Three Waters, I have to say, I probably didn't even really think about the fact that there's a stream that goes along Kenton Cambridge Terrace. Like I knew that, that strip of land was called the Canal Reserve, but I hadn't ever really connected that in my head. And when we talked about these kind of issues in the Merrill Task Force, you know, we kind of said, look, the, some of these are really far horizons. These are long-term things that are going to take time to do. And the first thing that we need to do is, is don't put any more streams and pipes. That's the first commitment. The second thing that we need to prioritise is that we regenerate those streams that are still open. And that's the amazing work we see happening with Kaifarafara Stream and the incredible partnership that Zealandia has, has been putting together to regenerate that stream. And the work that we're starting to see in the Ofero catchment that we're funding to try and improve water quality there. And then the much longer term opportunity was this opportunity to daylight streams that we have buried. And, and I love this, the phrase about letting them breathe again and letting us reconnect to the awa. And I think when we think about the key, really important streams in our city, the Kumuroto, the Waimapihi and the Waitangi, only the Waitangi is really still mostly under council land in public hands. The other ones mostly flow under private land now, which makes them a challenge. So that Waitangi stream is a really important opportunity for daylighting our streams. And as you know, I'm sitting on the Let's Get Wellington Moving Governance Reference Group. And one of the decisions that is going to be coming to us soon is that the option about where the M R T route goes down. And on, in one case, it might go down Taranaki Street. And a different option is it might go down Kenton Cambridge Terrace. And one of the things that I, I keep pressing and I kind of wanted to daylight this issue for all of you, that I've been raising this in G R G, is that daylighting the stream may not be compatible with the M R T route going down those streets. As you, if you start to look more at some of these projects that have happened in Korea, they've talked about in Seoul where a stream was daylighted, it actually takes a lot of space to affect, to do a good job of daylighting a stream. Because that stream's like six metres down below the road level. You need to kind of terrace down to the stream. You don't, what you don't want is to have kind of two rotating walls and a bit of yaki water flowing down the middle. That's not restoring the Maori of that stream. So I've been continually pushing, even though daylighting the stream is outside of the scope of Let's Get Wellington Moving, to make sure that we're considering, how do these decisions have an impact on what might be possible in the future around aspirations that Manu Finua might have for that stream. And I think just being really conscious of that we do not inadvertently recolonise that stream when we're making these, these decisions. And kind of take a possibility that at the moment we have in front of us, we don't want to inadvertently take that possibility away. And I particularly reflect on that because one of the other things we did on the Merrill Task Force for Three Waters is we kind of talked about the history of Three Waters. And actually this council was kind of instituted to do Three Waters projects. That was some of the first infrastructure that the council provided in the city. So if you reflect on it in that way, this stream, one of the first things that this institution did was put that stream in the ground. We put it in a pipe. And so I think it's really, the, the things that, that Takahere bring to the fore for me as, as, and our role here as a council, is that we kind of are aware of that history and that we're making our decisions today with that history in mind. And that we're doing our best to re-indigenise places where we, we have actually, this organisation severely colonised some of those, those things that have created harm. So that's something that I just kind of wanted to raise for you and that I think we will continue to have those conversations. And that may be an area that we actually have to let go of the tiller and let Manu Finua steer us about whether Taranaki Street or Kenton Cambridge Terrace is the appropriate place for us to go. So thank you very much. Congratulations and thanks to everybody who's been working on this.
Kewala, Mayor Foster.
Thanks Chair. And I, I won't repeat anything that everybody said because there's lots of beautiful words and I agree with all of those. But I do want to just say thank you to everyone who's helped get us to this stage, to our Manu Finua partners and to Karipa and your team. And also, if I can say to Sarah, but particularly also to you Jill, for the work that you've done. Because this has been an exercise, this has been an exercise in co-creation. Both Tupiki ora and Takahere have been exercising co-cooperation over the last 12 months or so to get us to this point. So I just wanted to, to say thank you. And as I did on Friday on that beautiful occasion that we had at Pipatea Marae, I want also to say thank you Jill to you. And I guess I'm echoing Rebecca's comments there for the, the huge difference that you've made in, in driving these, the relationship that we have with Manu Finua and with Maori and in making a huge difference for the city and helping us along the way. And I did just want to, but something that you, I think we have come an enormous distance in the last three, three years. And it's been a waka that by and large, we've paddled in the same direction together. You know, we get slammed for so many things, but most of the things that we do, we, we, you know, we pick up our paddles and we are paddling in the same direction. And I, I think we should be saying that loud and clear. But in the last three years, we've appointed Karipa, our tataheke, our chief Maori officer, and obviously fully resourced a programme which is, I, I don't know what the, the budget was before. I think it might've been a few hundred thousand dollars, but it's now $3 million a year. That is a significant resource. And that is why we have that, that wonderful team that you've gone through, everybody's names Jill. We have Manu Finua sitting around our table. We're looking forward to having a representative of Taranaki Huanui soon as well. We have the Maori ward, which is going to be voted for later on this year. We have the work of council and our C C Os in, and that bicultural journey. And Karen Firefield mentioned that effectively, well, for the zoo, but also on behalf of our, our C C O family, our C C O whanau. And I think you can see that, you just see that as you walk around in those, in those fabulous institutions that we have. You can see the bicultural journey that is happening there. And, and then we had of course, the beautiful, beautiful occasion that we had on, on Friday as we, as we signed together that partnership agreement. And I, I think Jill, as you, you started off, you talked about this is about partnership and about relationships. And that's really what it is about. And this is taking the, the ethos of partnership and relationships another step into a strategy, which is starting to put some flesh on the bones. It's starting to move us to actions. And then we, we know that we'll have an action plan coming later on this year. And I did just want to say, just one thing I'd reflect on, Simon, your comments about people are so quick to judge. Actually, they're so quick to judge anything we do. Most of the time, they don't read anything that we've actually done. They just take a few headlines and they'll slam whatever we've done. But I would encourage people to actually read what council does. And this is a great place to start, to read both Tupiki ora and Takahere. And I just wanted to finish off with just a reference and how this fits into the strategic pillars that we have agreed that we will operate under. So sustainability, creativity and inclusivity. And I think that Tupiki ora speaks powerfully to these as well. It certainly, absolutely is, it's a powerful demonstration of inclusion. It's a powerful demonstration of us working together in partnership with our Manu Finua and with our Maori community. And I really wanted to reflect on the public participation too. And I really want to thank all the public participants for the enthusiasm. I think, I can't remember who said that now. I think it might've been, it might've been Tam, just saying that this is taking the words off a piece of, off, off the paper and saying this means something. This is mana enhancing. And I think that that's really, really fantastic to hear what that does for empowering and what that does for enhancing mana and enhancing the way that people feel about themselves. I think that is so important. And I think that the, the focus on people's needs, on wellbeing, on housing, on work, on opportunity, on capability building that is in this document, and on language and cultural identity are all really, really powerful. And I think those speak to those three pillars very, very powerfully. And sustainability, of course, as you, you mentioned that so strongly, the health of our tawai, the health of tefenua, I think those are really, really powerful. They matter a lot, I think, to all of us. Certainly matter a lot to me. And so I'm delighted that we've got to this stage and just say thank you and well done to everybody.
Kewala, councillor Fitzsimons.
Inaiwi Manu Finua o tene rohi. I do want to start by acknowledging Manu Finua and also councillor Jill Day as well. And I guess I want to reflect on the nature of your leadership, which is gracious and humble and incredibly generous, both with your knowledge of tia Maori, tere Maori, but also with your dogged commitment and your incredible way of kind of bringing people along with you. And I think what I really like about your approach as well is that you constantly challenge yourself. So we did, you led Tituahu, then you were like, this isn't working fast enough. We need to do more. We need to do more. We need to find some more money. We need to build a stronger team. You're never satisfied. You're constantly restless. And I remember when, which, I remember as soon as the legislation was proposed to be changed for a Maori ward, you immediately started taking steps. You rang me and I was at Indonip and I have four missed calls from you. And you were like, ring me, ring me. You're like, we've got to call the Maori ward. I was like, okay, okay. But yeah, I did just want to acknowledge that you are impatient for your people and I really respect that. And Tamatha as well, I want to acknowledge you. You're an incredible Maori leader. And I remember the first time I met you and I came back to council and I'm like, Justin, I've just met this woman. She's the president of U S A. She's amazing. We need to put her on the Wellington M Z board. We need to find things for this woman in the city. We need to get her contributing. And he's like, calm down, calm down. There'll be a role coming. And there was a role coming and it's a very important one. And I did also want to acknowledge Karipa and your team. It's incredible to see the difference that's happened by bringing in more people, by properly resourcing something. I haven't met Johnny yet, but I've heard a lot about you and I know your cousin Shane. And, but I wanted to say that the work is so important and it's so inspiring. But what I think, when I read this, what I would took, really took from it is how it's visionary, it's inspiring, it uses metaphors, but it's also intensely practical. You can feel how it will change Wellington. And that's such a hard combination to get. Usually you get lots of visionary or lots of practical. This really feels like it's both. And it does feel like we've got a chance of making Wellington a city where wellbeing's really central to all the decisions that we make. And I wanted to comment also on what, what you said, Mayor Foster, when you talked about us all being on this together. And I think there is a tendency for many to look at the divisions around this table. But actually on this work, we have been united consistently and strongly. And, and people have come on board during the process. And that's a beautiful thing. And we need to acknowledge that and encourage it and celebrate it. Yeah. Cause it's been a pretty special thing to be part of. And I think wherever each of us ends up, we will take this work and, and to our, the rest of our lives. So that's pretty special. I also just wanted to talk about the Maori wardens. And it was lovely to have Gabriel here. And, and I talked to Gabriel a lot during the protests about how we can better support them. And just as it looked like that support was going to be lined up, fortunately the protest ended. But I did, was very keen for us to see this included here. And it, it does neatly fit in the work of the Poneke promise. It's perfect. Like it's, it is absolutely the place for it. And it's, and it is already happening. But officers will probably understand this, that when we sit around this table, we don't get to go and work on this every day. So we want to have our contribution and put it on the table. So it's not to say that it's not happening or, or anything else. But we want to be able to say that we're also helping it happen. So that, that's what this is about. And really getting just some firm commitment from us around the energy that already exists on this. So yeah, thank you, everybody for your work.
Kewala, councillor Phone.
Tūnākoto, Manu Finua. I just want to acknowledge you today. And from my part, it is a pleasure and exciting and time. And I am so looking forward to working alongside you with the amazing opportunities we have for whanganui atara and Poneke. I am the mama, as many of us around this table are, of two, you know, slightly biased, amazing koorero. And I know that in their own way, they are future leaders. I have come to this table because I want them to stand firm in their future, knowing that they are in the right place and doing the right thing. And that is why I am so excited about what we're doing today. And I know how important it is for their future, for them to go forward, knowing that these agreements and partnerships have been signed. I want to acknowledge right at the beginning of this triennium, the blessed person who brought in Meng Foon to talk about not that, because he's my namesake, but that, you know, big fan girl also, but the leadership he showed as mayor of Gisbon and that what he did for the, yeah, in partnership with Iwi there and just bringing those stories to us. And that has really inspired me along this journey to where we got to today. Also that as the capital city of Aotearoa, it is important that we show governance as it can be. And this is what I'm so excited about this, that we are stepping forward together to show how it can be done. You know, warts and all, there're going to be moments, as Helmut said, but you know, I think we're up for that. So a mahi to councillor Day, to councillor Paul, to Liz Kelly, to our team here, to our CEO, to Karipa and your team and all of our Manu Finua partners. And I'm looking forward to our future together. Kewala.
Kewala. That's everyone I have on my list. So I'll go to a very, very quick write of reply. I knew I would forget something off here because my paper is not very tidy. But I did want to acknowledge the engagement hui that happened to build this strategy and how fantastic they were and how special it was to actually be out in the community at Pipetia, at Waifetu and at Takapuahia. And also we were at, I think A S B as well, making sure I get all the ones. But I also want to really acknowledge Dee for her leadership through that. And to Naina and Anna who helped to carry this whilst the team was building and to make sure that we continued and we kept that relationship going and kept that community, that those communities that we're engaging with in the loop, which is really important because this is for our community. And so we need to help people understand that we, we are listening and that there has been a response. And the response, like I, I feel quite honoured to have, to have witnessed that because I can see the strategy has built from what was shared. So I do really want to acknowledge that. So thank you very much. And I just want to acknowledge councillor Paul for your leadership and for your support. It's been a real honour to work with you for the last three years. And I'm really excited to see what you do. And I do just want to encourage you to be staunch in the fact that you're still young. When I, when I, when I got, when I got elected, when I, when I was elected to council, I wasn't young. And, but I was, I was told that I could be a member of the young elected members. And I was just in shock. And, well, I'm not really now. I've kind of, I really have left the age group. But yeah, to discover that you were counted as a young elected member until 40 sends a really strong message to our rangatahi that we need you at this table. Because we just see all the time the perspective that you bring councillor Paul and, and we really appreciate it. And it comes with such a kaha and araha that it really does inspire our rangatahi in the city. And we see it when people come and support you at your, your various activities. And I want to acknowledge councillor Wolf and Mayor Foster for their comments and for encouraging our community to actually read this document before we get the feedback that sometimes we get. And just to, I also want to extend on that and to encourage our communities to learn our history. One of the things as a councillor that I feel honoured is I've actually got to read documents and understand the things that documents and understand the things that happened in the city that have never been spoken about or recorded in a wide, a mainstream sort of way. And I hope that with the curriculum and schools coming in around histories, that we will actually start to see that come out into our communities more and that we will understand and be able to respond better to our environment. And councillor Conde, I really want to acknowledge what you said about taking our hands off the tiller. And I think that's been a real thought process that I've had going for the last few years. I was sitting on a board last term and we did some training on Sutiratia Waitangi. And one of the questions that was put to us is, what are you willing to give up to uplift Sutiratia Waitangi? And it was, you could see everybody really thinking, you know, what are we willing to give up? Am I willing to give up my seat to make space for someone else? Am I willing to change my whole context to make it better? And so I guess from my perspective, and this is going way off into the whatever's coming next around local government reforms, but I do hope that this council is brave and that can take a pathway that might look different to what it is now. It's about more than just our own individual parts that we play in this. And want to acknowledge mayor Foster, your support over the last three years and to support and encourage the various ko papa that we've agreed to. And you know, to be the mayor of a council that's increased funding for Maori from 200,000 to 29 million, 200,000 a year, but then to 29 million over 10 years, that's a big change. So thank you for supporting that. And I do just want to speak to, I guess, my thoughts around the importance of mana fenua in the city. I do feel like the stars are starting to align in a really positive way for the city. And actually for Aotearoa, there's a lot of controversial discussion around co-governance and people getting quite wound up about it, but we're actually doing it. You know, we are on that pathway and what we are seeing is that we just gain in our city gains. I'm really proud. My hapu, Ngati Turangi Tuku, has just in the last few weeks agreed a mana fa kahono arahi, where a community board has been disbanded to create a committee with the council, which is 50/50. So it is happening and we are very much part of leading the way as a council in Te whanganui atara. And people do look to us as a guide. So I think it's good for us to realise that we've got people chasing at our tails and also, you know, trying different things. And we need to keep, we need to keep our, someone said to me the other day, pencils sharpened. So we definitely need to look at that. And councillor Fitzsimons, I think my parents would be giggling hearing you talk about me being restless. But yeah, I think it is hard because we do spend a lot of our life trying to fit into things. You know, that's a big part of human nature is to fit. And it's really hard when we realise that our fitting in sometimes is not allowing other people to fit in and that we need to always keep that in mind, you know, that we are privileged to be able to sit here and make decisions for the city, but what can we do to make sure that other people can participate in that? And I want to acknowledge councillor Phone about the awkwardness sometimes and the, you know, we won't always get it right and we don't always get it right, but we've got to try and we've got to be comfortable with being uncomfortable. So I'm going to finish it there and it's time to vote. That's good timing. Mea puti, and I've lost my voting thing. Oh, there it is. Who have a division? I don't reckon we'll need it. Feeling, she's voted, I think, I can see. Oh, did you do it? Councillor Young, are you there? We'll give it just a few more seconds. Can anyone text her? Because I know she has been sitting here, so. She has been, yeah. Send her a quick text. Yeah, we've waited this long. I can talk about lunch now, we've got lunch next door for councillors and obviously, what's that, sorry? You've got to go on to a fluoride. Okay. And then obviously we'll come back, I think we'll have half an hour, come back at 1.30 singers, we've got some kaia. Oh, kua mana. And that is unanimous. That's really exciting.
And now I'd like to welcome Kim to introduce the report and then we'll take any questions that there may be. So this is Trails Wellington Mataurangi Track Proposal. It's over to you, Kaikue.
Thank you Chair. Well, Tenar Koto, this report asks the committee here to agree to support the development of a new mountain biking track on Mataurangi. Trails Wellington are proposing to fund the construction of the new mountain bike priority trail in Mataurangi. And council, as you know, has consulted on the original proposal back in February and received around 365 or so submissions. Ninety-three percent of those were in support of the proposal. And over the last while, council has, offices have been working closely with those, a number of those people who oppose the development. a number of those people who oppose the development, looking at how we might be able to mitigate a number of those concerns. The trail, of course, will be an intermediate level trail. And it'll be provided, around about 1.5 kilometres or so of continuous descent, ending up at the Badminton Hall in Hatatai. So, and as you know, also, the trail proposal is in the Wellington Town Belt. Council offices have assessed the proposal against the assessment outlined in the Wellington Town Belt Management Plan. And have found that it's consistent with that plan. So I'll now hand over to Mifanway and Ella to add further commentary and to respond to any sort of technical questions you might have. So, thank you.
I'll just make one quick point of clarification. So we did realign the end point of the trail. So it's not down by the Badminton Hall on State Highway One. It's now in the skills area up the top to avoid that risk of cars entering onto the road.
Thank you. Great.
Councillor Young has partai?
So it's just about the slight change that the short section of track near the Hatatai saddle is retained as a shared track. So I thought one of the whole advantages of this track was the fact that it was finally separating cyclists from pedestrians. So I can't see why we're peddling back on that.
This was about the amendment, is it? Yeah, I believe my understanding is that bit of section is already shared track. So it's not part of the new trail that's being constructed. Unless I've misunderstood the amendment that was being passed?
Okay, hence the word retained. So, all right, that's fine, thank you.
Did you want to ask a question, Councillor Pinnott, on that?
Sorry, I just wanted to make the comment that it was from someone who's very familiar with the area and a King Walker, so I took that out.
Any other questions, Councillor Conde?
Pardon me. I was just interested in if we could scroll up so we can see the final resolution. This one, that number 11, that there would be no new trail constructed on Matairangi. And it just seemed like a very strong statement to me. So I just wanted some more information about whether that's an appropriate thing for us to decide.
Absolutely. In 2005, the Matairangi Master Plan recommended some trails. Those have all been constructed now. So in our minds, the trail construction with the addition of this new trail will be complete. If you have a look at the yellow lines in attachment one, you can actually see that the hill is fairly full of trails. So we are very comfortable with the focus now on the improvement and realignment potentially to those existing trails without the need to add anything new. We did pass a similar amendment at Waimepahe Reserve when we completed the building of the Eki Gai Trail. And actually, that's been really successful because it means that the bikers know that they've got what they've got and the environmental groups are happy with that also. Thank you.
That's very helpful, thank you, Councillor Foden.
Kewa'ra, and thank you, and I have been asking questions about clarity around the potential accessibility trail. But I just also then want to know how that fits with 11 in the possibility that we find a trail that might be suitable for accessible riders.
So in terms of the trail that we're looking at currently, it's the one that we are proposing to seal and improve and slightly widen. That is an existing trail, so that won't be a new trail. That would be one of the realignment and improvements of an existing trail. In terms of a brand new large scale accessibility trail that we'd like to create, there is not room for that on Matairangi. So that's where I was saying, that's likely to be somewhere in the northern, yeah, the northern areas. But there are plenty of trails on Matairangi itself that can be repurposed for that use rather than having to build new.
I've got a question about the accessibility trails because I imagine that there's different types and stages of, because, you know, for some people, if they have been keen mountain bikers and maybe they've had an accident, but they want to continue to mountain bike, they may still want some challenge and like kind of the same sort of feel. Is that something that we can look at? Because obviously, a track that's sealed has a different experience. And I know that there are ones around the country where they do have like more like the gravel kind of tracks.
Yeah, that's why we're recommending we look at that through the open space and recreation strategy because we are not the experts. We need to go and talk to all the disability groups. We're aware there's a huge range of disabilities we need to take into account. So that absolutely will form a part of that design process.
So I guess the follow on question from that is we wouldn't just limit ourselves to one track if there is another track around the city that could be kind of, I guess, maybe a sort of more adventurous but accessible track in a way that serves the community, we would be open to that.
Yeah, absolutely. Or we might actually find one area, for example, in some of these new areas, we're acquiring the retired farmland, you know, they've got four wheel drive farm tracks that actually could be suitable for mountain bike track. And then you might put an additional track in around there as well. So it could still be within the same area. But yeah, it's definitely something that the team are thinking about across the board in terms of improving accessibility. They've, yeah, they've got a strong focus on it.
Because I imagine there are, there are bikes that the technology's getting better all the time, there are bikes that people can actually ride that effectively give the same experience as a mountain bike.
Absolutely. And actually, e-bikes, the other thing we need to review, sort of as an aside, through the strategy reviews, is the use of e-bikes on our trails. Because e-bikes really do open up a range of our trails for people with disabilities. So if the disabilities aren't that severe, I've got a friend, for example, can't ride a normal bike but can ride an e-bike. So yeah, opening up trails for that as well, I think is going to be helpful.
Oh, that's really helpful, thank you. Are there any other partai? Did you still have a question, Councillor Young? Where are you?
No, no, I've asked my question, thank you. Well, actually, no, because I did one, just one thing. So how binding is that, that we're not going to have any more trails? Because I, I mean, I can't imagine it is that binding at all. It's not statutory or anything.
I would say that the opportunity, if you wanted to review that, would be through the Open Space Access Plan, which is going to come back to council in about three years' time for review.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Is that, that's all the partai? All right. So I think Councillor Paul's going to introduce the paper. Okay, Councillor Pinnott, over to you.
And I'd just like to start by thanking you Chair for facilitating this process and Councillor Paul and Councillor Young, I appreciate that. So look, obviously, protecting our precious environment is critical. But also making or making Wellington even more fun is important as well. And so I'm now happy to support this track. As you know, I had some deep concerns about it. But given the support for the amendments, I think this is looking good. So Mifanway was an absolute star yesterday. Thank you so much for helping me. Obviously, the mountain bike community has been incredibly active and it's a generous gift and the city, I'm sure, is very grateful. We've had Friends of the Town Belt, Mount Victoria Residents Association, Living Streets getting involved and again, very grateful. So it's great to hear people connecting with nature, enjoying healthy lifestyles, managing pests. This is just a good thing for the city. But we know that there are often concerns around separating cyclists and walkers. And I think what I've tried to do here is to make sure we're clear that this is, you know, that walkers still and will continue to have priority whilst making space for other users. I have to say that the disability access made me feel bad. Because I was just like, oh my goodness, you know, like it is a basic human right that people should be able to have access to every building, every site. And then we're looking at a pathway and it's really difficult. So I'm glad there's an amendment in there to look at what it could look like. Because we shouldn't be keeping the disabled community out of our wonderful parks and gardens. And look, it's really great to see the commitment to getting rid of the illegal tracks because that does tend to rack people up quite a lot. And so I think that will really help, obviously, all the ecological restoration work. We were told it wasn't pristine, well, we're going to make it way better. We need to re-indigenise, I think, was the word used before. Well, we're going to do that here because there's quite a lot of low grade greenery there. So we can do a lot better. So look, I'm, I'm happy, I think we've got some work to do here, which I'm very keen to be involved in, I'm sure that a number of other councillors. And we will get the best for both groups, the mountain bikers and the walkers. Kewa'ra.
Kewa'ra and Councillor Young's going to second.
Yeah, no, I'm delighted to second this. I mean, I think probably I live certainly on this side of the hill, the closest to the town belt. And I walk on it a lot. I think it's a fantastic asset for Wellingtonians. And I think it's also really good that this cycleway will be more usable by people who don't have terrifyingly scary ideas of mountain biking. I mean, a lot of our mountain bike trails are for the advanced only and this one will be for those who are less advanced. The town belt is an amazing asset and the more people who can have access to it and use it, the better. So it is a space for everybody, but in particular, I'd like to say Trails Wellington have done a really great job at being responsible mountain bikers in the work they've done in building and, dare I say, policing the mountain bike trails. I think they are an exemplar of an organisation who really live the talk, I'm all walk the talk or whatever the expression is. Because they help build them, they look after them, they have a really responsible, proactive approach towards mountain biking. And they have done as much as anyone in getting rid of the guerrilla or illegal mountain bike trails that are a curse all around the town belt. Not least because some of them aren't very safe. So I'd just like to commend Trails Wellington for the work that they have done and will continue to do. And of course, this very generous gift towards the building of mountain bike trails. We've come a long way on the town belt from when Mount Victoria was where the council grazed its horses, which they used to deliver the milk. You'll be surprised to know, I don't remember that. That was well before my time. But the town belt is now a fantastic area for recreation. And I'm so pleased that this is an intermediate track and it will make mountain biking more approachable for everyone who wants to, which does not include me. So I have a great pleasure in seconding this.
Thank you, Councillor Foden.
Kewa'ra, this is really great to see this paper come. I do want to thank all the submitters. It was a really, painted a great picture of the challenges that we've got ahead of us here. But just alongside that, I'd also like to thank Councillor Pinnott for bringing these amendments to strengthen and really bring a balance to what we're dealing with in Matairangi around the, with the tracks. I've had a couple of experience, well, you know, but just the two experiences that stand out most for me. One where I watched a friend picking up Hurrangatahi from mountain biking. The joy in his face was exceptional, the relief in hers was wonderful. And, you know, you just see what a, what a wonderful, I don't like to use the word asset, but we are blessed with these places for our young people. But at the same time, I have the story of a very prominent Wellingtonian who was knocked out in a playground on Mount Victoria while looking after Hurrungo by a mountain biker who came hooning out of the bush. So these are, you know, really, they demonstrate the contradictions of what we're trying to deal with here. So I'm really pleased to see that officers are committing to really understanding what we do best and that we're learning by overseas best practice. We've had someone in. And that we continue through our partnerships with our groups to make sure that is a core principle for our mountain biking kopapa or tika. And I will be the first, if it's not adhered to, to start removing more tracks. You know, because I think that is fair, that's the question I asked Patrick this morning. Is this the right place for a full on mountain bike park? And to Fanganua Tara. But why I am really excited about this new track is that I am really keen to see the balance it will bring. That was one of the key things I got out of the submissions. That by enabling more young people, more beginners, more women, more children, that will actually tip the balance into the kopapa that goes on amongst the culture of the trail riders. So I'm excited about that. But actually, the thing that also really excited me, and so I was a bit nervous when I saw we weren't supporting the accessibility trail at this point. But I thank officers for recognising the opportunity there. And I just, in my search for understanding what this would look like for people with different abilities, elderly, We Alls For Wellbeing is an organisation in the UK who work with people with disabilities. In Newtown, I'm seeing more people on bikes who have special needs, like a three wheeler bike. And this just makes me so excited for the way that we're rolling out our cycleways, but these opportunities that we can bring for wellbeing for all of our people. And also, there's one where they're taking elderly for rides on bikes. And I can tell you, I have asked my children to do that for me when I am no longer able to ride. So please, yeah, can I make sure that we persist with the route that will enable more people to access these rides and the wonderful, yeah, wellness that you gain from being in our ngahere. So kewa'ra for the mahi, everyone.
Kewa'ra. I think that's everyone on the list. Anyone else want to speak? So write a reply?
Sorry, I just wanted to make one comment just about the history of this place. We have still got some work to do there. So thank you, Councillor Day, for putting that challenge out there that it is a, I'm sorry, it is a pakihua construct. And so, but, but this will hopefully be a continuation and definitely as we do more planting, we can bring it back to its proper state. So thank you very much, great process.
Meputi, next vote. Koamana, that's carried unanimously. All right. Thank you very much to the staff, thank you for your work. Thanks, Mifanway, thanks Ella. All right, we're on to item 2.4, actions tracking. So no mai kumfau, kite kura iti kore ro.
Thank you. Maybe if we just take the report as read and I'm hopefully happy to answer any, any questions you may have.
Yeah, I think that has been worked on. Thank you, so there's no partai. We will, I'm happy to move that. Who would like to second, Councillor Paul, thank you. And we'll put that to the vote. Meputi. It's all moving so fast now, it's hard to keep up. You thought about voting, didn't you? Sometimes it's not very sensitive, hey? Oh, koamana, that's carried. And then we're now on to item 2.5, the forward program. No mai a no, kumfau, kite kura iti kore ro. Over to you.
So we'll take this one as read also, but just something to note is the, we have, on Thursday, the 2nd of June, we have the Community Housing Sustainability Paper, the detailed chip design. We may move that into, with the permission of the Chair, into August because we still have the long term planned deliberations at the end of June. So we don't want to, we want to make sure that we're fully informed before we bring this paper forward. So that's a consideration there. Yeah, thank you.
Are there any questions around that? I think it makes, makes a lot of sense. So I'm happy to move that. Councillor Matthews, would you like to second it? So meputi? What was that? What we have to do is spend the time on the important stuff and then, you know, we, we're efficient, that's right. Councillor Young, are you trying to vote? Is there not?
I had voted but it came down again.
Oh. Koamana, so that's carried unanimously. And I would just like to finish off by thanking Democracy Services, thank you Alyssa for your awesome help today and the team over there. Thank you, Kim, and thank you to all of the mahi that's gone in to making today run smoothly. And to my colleagues for being really supportive and, yeah, great meeting. Thank you. So koamutu iti nehui itu motakarakia mutenga.